Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting of June 5th, 2019. At this time, could I please have Pastor Ron Bailey come forward for the invocation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Heavenly Father, we thank you that we can call upon your name. Your great word says if we will call on your name, you'll show us great and mighty things that we don't know. Heavenly Father, I first pray for your protection on every City Council member in this day and age of violence and anger and hatred and variance. We pray your divine protection on every City Council member, every city staffer, every city worker. We also pray your protection on our fire and our police. We pray that they would be elevated in the sight of all the people for the benefit of the city of Los Banos. And then, Father, we pray that you would give our City Council members wisdom that is from above. There are so many difficult things to decide and deliberate on. I pray that you would give them the wisdom that is from above, that is first pure, and then peaceable, and then easy to be entreated. I pray for a great outpouring of civility and kindness and understanding and yet forthrightness. We thank you for this, and we pray all of this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I'd like to call this meeting of June 5th, the Los Banos City Council, to order. And Chief, could you lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Director Maloney, roll call.
Faria.
Here.
Johnson Santos.
Here.
Jones.
Lewis.
Lalata.
Here, we do have a quorum. Consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Lewis.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Santos.
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Santos, to approve the agenda stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to presentations. Number five, proclamation recognizing disability awareness month. And is Michelle here? Michelle Allen? Okay. Well, I think we'll just go on to the other proclamations, and maybe she might show up. Okay, let's go on to the next proclamation, recognizing the Los Banos High School varsity baseball team. Could they please come forward with the athletic director, Joe Barcellus, and coach Pat Fuentes, and all the team, please come forward? Can I have the entire council come down? It's a great honor for this team. I want you to notice something about these players. They walked in, did you hear any talking when they walked in? Not one. Not one sound. And the respect that these young men show is not just with the baseball team. When I go to the football team and the Rotary cooks lunch for them or dinner, there's not a sound mentioned. These men are so respectful, men and women, Los Banos High School in Pacheco. These coaches work hard, not only with their athletic ability, but also with their daily skills and life skills. So, coaches, I want to thank you very much for what you do. And not only that, I want to thank you players for the way you behave and the way you represent yourselves. So with that, I would like to read this proclamation, recognizing the Los Banos High School varsity baseball team. Whereas the Los Banos High School varsity baseball team had a record of 28-1, a 24-game winning streak. Thirteen games were shutouts, with the team only giving up one run or less in 22 of the games. And they outscored their opponents a remarkable 262 to 30. And whereas the Los Banos High School varsity baseball team is the 2019 Western Athletic Conference, it's called WAC, undefeated league champions for the third year in a row. And the Los Banos High School varsity baseball team, as the number one seed, won the California Interscholastic Federation, CIF, San Joaquin Section, SJS, and Division Four playoffs, being held from May 14th to May 27th, 2019, which had not been won since 1994. The Los Banos High School varsity baseball team was also named Division III State Baseball Team of the Year by the Cal High Sports, a first-time honor. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and the City Council members of the city of Los Banos do hereby recognize and commend the Los Banos High School varsity baseball team for their hard work, dedication, and commitment. And be it further proclaimed that the City Council and the city of Los Banos do hereby congratulate and recognize the Los Banos High School varsity baseball team for their outstanding achievement and how well they represent Los Banos as they traveled from city to city throughout their amazing season. On behalf... So on behalf of the mayor, the City Council, thank you so much for what you do, coaches. Thank you for what you do. And just keep it, how many of you are seniors? Fantastic. Fantastic. Just keep up the good work. Wow. Nice beard. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Coaches, we're gonna see these juniors that are gonna be seniors next year, back here next year? All right, good. So who am I gonna present this to? Yeah. Thanks again. Okay, thank you. Okay. Where are we now? Okay, now we're gonna present certificates of recognition of participation and achievements at the Merced County Pentathlon. And is Dr. Marshall here? Terry, that's good. Hey. Okay, so come on, Dr. Marshall. So it's always a great pleasure having Dr. Marshall visit us and being able to work with our amazing school system. Dr. Marshall is the superintendent, if you didn't know that, of the Los Banos Unified School District, and he's here tonight representing the Pentathlon Award winners for the, let's see, is this, this is Westside Union, Westside Union Elementary School. Okay, so they have pentathlon and decathlon, and it stretches from elementary school to junior high also, correct? And then we also have the pentathlon, which is, or decathlon, and that is a high school area of awards. But tonight, we are here for Westside Union Elementary School, and I have a number of awards to present. And Dr. Marshall, if you would please accept these. And they are Westside Union Elementary School, first place overall. Congratulations. Lorena Filasco Elementary School, second place overall. Westside Union Elementary School, first place, super quiz. Lorena Filasco Elementary School, second place, super quiz. Miano Elementary School, fourth place, super quiz. Los Banos Junior High School, seventh grade, fourth place, super quiz. Creekside Junior High School, seventh grade, fifth place, super quiz. And Creekside Junior High School, eighth grade, fifth place, super quiz. So not only athletics, but we have academics. So kids can participate. Those who are athletic inclined can participate athletics. Those who are academically, or not academically, but those who wish to participate in other than athletic programs, we have the academic programs, and there's some students who cross over, and they do both. So we are very pleased to be able to present these awards, not only to achievements in athleticism, but also with the academics and the knowledge-based skills that these kids have displayed over the years in Merced, because that's where the pentathlon and decathlon are held. So Mark, thank you. Keep up the good work, and please congratulate all the students for us. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Faria, for please keeping us up to date with the school system and the awards that we need to present. Yeah, it's very important that we have all these contacts. All right. Did Michelle show up? Did we have Michelle Allen, Executive Director? Well, you know, I'm just going to, I want to recognize, I should do this, because even if she's not here, we need to recognize this proclamation. And Director Maloney will make sure that she receives it. Proclamation recognizing disability awareness month. Whereas disabilities can affect all people regardless of race, age, gender, social status, with the essence of life is not embodied by physical or mental perfection, but it is an integral part of the human spirit. Increasing public awareness about diverse abilities is vital to fighting the stigma and the discrimination that often serve as a barrier to employment, socialization, and individual well-being. There are an estimated 4,206,918 people with disabilities in the state of California, and over 40,971 people with disabilities in Merced County. And within the next year, at least one out of eight Californians will experience a disability personally and/or through a family member. The city of Los Banos wants to celebrate and recognize people with different abilities and independent and productive communities as individual, excuse me, independent and productive members of our community. Education, understanding, access, engagement, and relationships are important components to being connected, viable, healthy community. Communities thrive when residents appreciate the unique gifts inside people of all abilities, and the city of Los Banos recognizes healthy communities as a priority. By developing relationships with our neighbors, we make our community a place where everyone participates and is a valued member. Whereas a society of disabilities will commemorate June 2019 and each June thereafter as Disability Awareness Month. Now therefore, be it proclaiming that the mayor and the City Council members of the city of Los Banos do here declare June 2019 as Disability Awareness Month, and urge all of our citizens to become aware of the needs and capabilities of persons with disabilities. And Director Maloney, would you please? Sure. Thank you. All right, let's go on to item six, public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. And if you're here tonight and you'd like to speak about item eight, there will be a public forum for that, too. So if you'd like to speak during that time, then on item eight, you can do so at that time if you wish. Okay, is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum? What do you mean, Stan? Okay, go ahead.
My name is Stan Silver. I'm a citizen of the city of Los Banos. And what I'd like to thank the city clerk for getting back in touch with me over an issue I had sometime ago. So I appreciate you guys acting on that. With that being said, I had written a letter protest on the water rate increase, or utility rate increase, basically because I just don't like increases. You guys are under the gun. It costs a lot of money to run these systems. And I really understand that, but a couple of concerns is, one is like the CPI. You know, CPI was taken from San Francisco Hayward, and they only covered some areas in California, such as San Diego, Riverside, Los Angeles. And they self-admittedly don't acknowledge rural areas. So I would have thought that maybe there's some kind of a correction factor to be used when you talk about a CPI, say, for Los Banos. And being that I didn't know if the letter would preserve my right to speak later on, I just want to bring this, you know, bring this out. The other thing that I have, it's related to, in a sense, you currently have an action plan because of certain constituents of the water that doesn't meet the state criteria. And the state has a real bad habit of outdoing the federal. And they have no, they don't care how much it's gonna cost us. And to meet those requirements is really gonna cost a lot. It's gonna cost a lot of money. And somewhere down the line, you know, the state's gonna have to come and say, you're done with your action plan. You have to take care of this. We keep kicking that can down the road. So I would not want to have your job. I think the utility department, I think they do one heck of a job for what they have to work with. And every time they go to get supplies, and every time they go to do operating costs, they just keep going up and up. And for a lot of people, you know, if gas prices go up, you can cut back on driving. If electricity goes up, you can cut back on using electricity. You know, with the rates, you could cut the water all the way out, and you could not send any garbage out in the can, but you're still gonna pay that rate. So I wouldn't want to be in your position, but I just want to let you guys know how I felt, and you've got some tough decisions to make. I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you. I couldn't have said it better myself, Stan. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to public forum?
Tom Calgen, representing the Downtown Association. Sharon Silva, our executive director, has a friend that works for the 209 magazine. It's a magazine that covers the 209 area code, and it's a really nice piece. Anyway, she was...
And that's our area code, right?
That's our area code, yes. Anyway, there's a very nice article. She got this lady to come down to Los Banos and write an article about our downtown. And we've just got copies of this, so everybody can take a look at it. It's the last article in the, just turn to the last page and then flip back one page. It's a three-page article. It's a very nice article. Can I hand these out, or?
If you could hand them to the city clerk, that would be great, and then she'll give them to us. Thank you, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm following on Tom's. Just wanted to give you a little bit of what's going on in the downtown. Tomorrow night, we're going to be having an event. Some of our stores, we have about eight of them that are opening up and are going to have some food and activity. And it is called Ladies' Night Out, but however, we put a little tagline that says, "Men are welcome, just bring your wallet." So we want you to come and spend your money in town and stay here and bring your tax dollars to Los Banos. Also, I would just like to tell you just two other things. In August, we're gonna have our first major fundraiser. It's a casino night. It's gonna be held at the DES. And we're very excited about that. And on September 19th, this is for calendar's purpose, we'll be having the Farm to Table. And again, this year, we're gonna be having it out in the, I'm sorry, my mind went out in the, that's right, the Henry Miller Plaza. So thank you.
Say by the statue.
Yes, by the statue. But the other thing that we're starting to do is we're gonna be starting right away to have Thursday nights. We're gonna try to get activity going... We're going to try to get activity going on into the downtown and have some music playing and work with some of the restaurants and start getting at least Thursday night open and working with our members on that. So we have a lot of things that we're looking forward to in, in the downtown area. Ooh, ouch. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, um, I'm Joan Filasco LaSavia, and I'm here to discuss the Prop 218. It's, um, not only my opinion, but many people who have asked me to come, that it's going to create an economic hardship for the majority of the population of Los Banos. The CPI, um, report applied to the San Francisco area, and it's flawed in all of our areas. It's unsuitable, and it's false, it's a false equivalent study. The 3.5 increase that's suggested is above the nation's 2.8 to 2.9 percent increase in wages. I suspect Los Banos' is even lower. The median income of this report for San Francisco exceeds $100,000, whereas Los Banos' median income is $46,000, which averages at only $17,160, which is significantly lower than the compared report to San Francisco. Next, the garbage and waste services. Anyone who has ever driven in San Francisco, of course, can see why service there is far more time and labor-intensive. That study's data is flawed in comparison to Los Banos also. Now, the water source and the quality of our drinking water is of tremendous concern to me. San Francisco's is, water is rated superior, in fact, it's rated as the cleanest in the United States. Los Banos, on the other hand, our water remains in violation. The chromium 6 is a known carcinogen, and although the standard was raised just two years ago, Los Banos residents have been drinking this water for a significant amount of time, whereas we know with time, it's unknown cancer. Our water's tainted, I don't see how, as a result, we have an unhealthy drinkable water here, whereas San Francisco has superior drinking water with a cost to fill a gallon is one-half of a cent. We go out and we buy our water to, to find a pure source at 99 cents. How can the city justify raising our rates for a documented inferior product of the water? It's in, in my opinion and many's, and I want you, the city, to really consider this with foresight. It's in our best interest, as I am very vested in the interest of the city and not just my own personal bill, it's in our best interest to examine this decision on Prop 218 with wisdom and foresight. I cannot stress this enough. We can all recall the temporary dead landscapes due to the drought. Enacting Prop 21 potentially will result in the same with permanently dried-out yards. That results in land sale value decrease, potential fire hazards, more cost to the city, and more water needed for the fire department. Next, the lack of pride in our city and our visual appearance, exterior appearance. That negatively impacts the city in many subliminal ways, and the morale. I implore you to think progressively. What ultimately will financially sustain our city? If the average income is $17,000, it might follow to assume that most people will not be able to run, take care of their yards, just as one example. To think progressively needs to include staying competitive with our neighboring communities to remain attractive in soliciting future businesses to Los Banos. That translates to fiscal income. Yes, this is a financial hardship will fall on all of the local residents, that's true, but it doesn't end there. If our city does not consider its plan to sustain itself for the next two decades or more, and in fact, ultimately, this hardship will be created, the hardship created if adopting Prop 21 will be greatest felt by the City of Los Banos. Please, please, vote with wisdom, because it's not as simple as people crying about their water bill. It's about our city and the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Rhonda Lowe, I just want to give you a very, very brief update on what UC Merced Small Business Development Center is doing in our community to grow and help sustain the businesses that are here and that are looking to come into our community. We're seeing a significant, uh, amount of people that are looking to start a business here, and we're starting to see even more businesses that are looking to grow their businesses here and to do things differently to grow their business. This last week, I've had seven new clients assigned that are either looking to start a business here or to, that are already in business here. And that tells me that there is a feeling of optimism in our community, because people don't start a business in a community that doesn't have any potential to it. So I'm, I'm excited about it, and I, I'm sure that you are too. In addition to dealing with our businesses, we're also doing more workshops than ever. We've done, I've done a couple of social media workshops, and we're going to be doing another one in the downtown area. And, uh, we're about ready to really get into our youth business expo, which I'm really excited about. We've got some, some young people that I've already heard from that have got some actually amazing business ideas right here in our community. One of them is a sixth grader, and I think that's pretty cool, that we've got young people that are our future business people that have already got that desire. So I think you, we, we will continue to work with the city, and, um, and we're here as partners with the city to help our community, our business community grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Jennifer Joaquin with Republic Services. Just wanted to come by and talk to you guys about how successful our citywide cleanup was, um, this last month, which was hosted on May 18th. That was, um, once again at the Los Banos Fairgrounds, um, that was from 7 to 2 o'clock. Uh, this was a rain-or-shine event, the sun did shine, and it did rain on us that last about 30, 45 minutes. Uh, but we were successfully able to get all the residents in and out in a timely manner, um, in a safe manner as well. Um, just wanted to kind of give you guys some numbers to let you know what we had received this year during the cleanup. With Republic Services, we are in charge of the garbage and the green waste at that event. We, uh, we create, oh, we didn't create, I'm sorry, but we collected 111 tons of green waste and residential trash. A&amp;S Metals was also there with us, which was in charge of metals and electronic waste. With the electronic waste, it was about 1,800 pounds that they received, and with the metals, we collected 35, um, 35 tons of metals as well. Um, the mattresses is a big deal here, we get a lot of those. We actually almost had two and a half trailers of mattresses, which was about 486 pieces we collected between mattresses and, um, um, oh, what is the word I'm looking for?
Box springs?
Box springs, there we go, thank you very much. And then the Regional Waste Authority also hosted, that helped host that event with the tire collection, which was 11.40 tons. And then our next event is going to be, uh, which is a fall cleanup, which is, um, Saturday, September 21st, same place, same time, 7 to 2, at the fairground parking lot.
Do you have a car count? Because I saw cars around the block and around the block.
Um, I do not have a car count, but I can tell you I had some people come in at least eight to 10 times. So that was, it was a good timeframe, it had enough time for everybody to make it through, so.
Yeah, and for everyone, that's trash that would end up on the streets, because people don't want to pay the dumping fee. And so these events are sponsored by, uh, Merced County Association of Governments, City of Los Banos, uh, Republic, uh, Waste, and, and it's, it is, it's a, it's a good deal, because this is stuff that's off our streets permanently, so thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
How you guys doing? My name is, uh, Pedram Bastan. I moved here August of last year. I actually appreciate that we're able to speak up for ourselves, and I thank you for you guys for letting us do this. I just, I don't have anything set, I just wanted to see what this meeting was about, but I, I, I love that you guys are doing your homework, especially that you brought up these numbers, and I personally feel, I moved here because I, I felt like I needed a new beginning. I moved from the Bay Area, I commute every day, and seeing if we're going to follow this trend of the Bay Area, it's, it's a little, it's going to be difficult. We can't just jump into it, I feel like we have to slowly grow into it, but doing a five-year plan, I feel like might be a little rough, especially at these rates that we're proposing. I think maybe we need a little bit more num, like better numbers or something. I just feel like it's a little too much for the, for, the economy's doing good, but I feel like it's also going to come down, and it's going to hurt us later. So, I don't know if maybe you guys considered that as part of the proposal? And, uh, I, like I said, I really love this town, I love the way it's going, uh, I just don't want it to grow and turn into the Bay Area. It's going to disgust me, you know? And, uh, thank you for your time.
I think the Bay Area's already here.
I know, yeah. I'm one of those guys.
Adam, resident of Los Banos, um, I came here to bring to your attention today that the, um, the recovery, uh, outlet, uh, the park, the AA Serenity Group, um, as I had went to it, witnessed that it has become a, a drug den, um, and a sex ring, and a get-out-of-jail-free card for the people who attend there. It's, um, I had to bring it to your attention, I brought it to the attention of, uh, those who are trustees. I went, I attended their a business meeting on Sunday, this last Sunday, and I put to their agenda that no service positions for people who are still using other substances, because it's a, a program of, of complete abstinence. For that, I was removed for, from, for six months from there, as I was deemed unsafe because of, uh, I believed that if you're getting high every day, that you shouldn't be running a meeting, which other, um, which other new pe, newcomers are coming to get recovery, and it's not available for them, because they're being offered drugs and sex and, um, the, uh, even in the first step, it says "we," it's not a program of "we," um, it's, it, this, they're not sharing the same beliefs, um, as the program itself. I also, I wanted to do a scripture reading to you of number, of, of Numbers 25, but I think you all could find that at home, if you all are wanting to. And I also wanted to address the homelessness on the creek. I was there on Monday when they were given, um, a four days to remove themselves, they will have to be remove themselves Thursday, tomorrow, at 11:00 a.m. If not, they'll be arrested. I have not went and checked on them yet, uh, I was waiting for, uh, one of my, uh, a person who I work with, he's a, a case study of mine that I take on, um, as a homeless person who is on, who's, who's using. He wasn't able to come to, to speak. These people, when they were there talking to the Merced, uh, County officials, their statements were that we have not caused anyone any trouble, that we are here using the, uh, the, uh, outreach programs for food and assistance, and that that was their, um, where their line out of town plus safe for them. They believe that if they were to go anywhere else, that their lives would be threatened by other people, that their, that their lives, uh, yeah. It's pretty sad. But they have nowhere to go, and their complaint was that they caused no problem to anyone, that they haven't, they haven't broken into anyone's homes, that they haven't broken into anyone's cars, that they, they have been good, and that they have been, they have been leaving people alone. But they are now, they seem to be, have to move closer into town, they've been pushed out, uh, from, uh, from quite a few places, flooded out, actually. They just, the farmers just flooded them and flooded everything that they had. Quite a few times, that happened last time on Thanksgiving, and that happened on the 30th of, of May, that they were just completely flooded out into, under four feet of water. Police find a way to help them, these, um, the place for recovery, the recovery is a place of drugs now and of sex, and they don't even have a place to recover.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
I'm Judy Ariart, and I come here to, come, first time I come about the water. I live right by the city, I get the first shot of the bad water, I can't use it, so I buy bottled water. The water's going up, but then you're going to have to pay for my bottled water, because I have to get more. The water, can't drink it, I can just wash with it, take a shower, I think it's bothering my skin. But anyway, uh, the water, I can't see it going up if you're not going to do something about it. If you fix the water and we can drink the water, that's fine, but if we have to keep buying bottled water, that's ridiculous. I think it's just, we don't need the water, we just don't need to raise the water, we don't need it right now. We've got enough problems. So I think that, uh, I know you're going to do it anyway, but I'm going to go and watch my Warrior game, and you can do what you want, just wanted to give you my opinion. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, we will now close the public forum, and we will go on to item seven, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. Tonight, we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 216-203 through 216-524 in the amount of $1,376,541.37. City Council Resolution Number 6081, accepting public improvements for East Center Phase 1, generally located within the area bounded by Center Avenue to the west, Pioneer Road to the south, Diablo Street and Pike Street to the east, APNs 431-270-004 and 431-270-010, Pioneer Development Company E. City Council Resolution Number 6082, approving and adopting final track map number 2017-03 Sunrise Ranch, generally located within the area bounded by B Street to the north, Place Road to the west, San Luis Street to the south, and Jolynn Park Manor subdivision to the east, APN 428-080-001 Trevino Pioneer A California LLC. City Council Resolution Number 6083, awarding contract for legal advertising to the Los Banos Enterprise for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, and authorizing the city manager to execute agreement. City Council Resolution Number 6084, approving amendment number two to the professional services agreement with CSG Consultants, Inc., for plan check and building inspection services, extending the term date to June 30th, 2020, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Is there any city council member who would like to remove an item for discussion at this time? I, I'd like to, um, review item D, please. Remove item D for discussion. Okay, do I have a motion for everything minus item D? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as submitted, minus item D.
Ms. Freya?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Freya, to approve the consent agenda, minus item D. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, I, I just have a couple of questions about item D, and are we keeping up with technology? Because, you know, it, it, it has to be an adjudicated newspaper, is that the way the law reads on this? Mr. Vaughn, you want to respond?
Actually, the code is very specific on legal advertising, and we're following that code, and it does require-
Oh, did I turn him off?
I'm on.
Yeah.
And so, yes, uh, legal advertisements have to be- And so, yes, uh, legal advertisements have to be published in the paper as set forth by the Civil Code and the Government Code. And so we need to have a vendor to do the legal advertising for us. Uh, there's only two in town that are allowed to do that, and I don't know if both of them bid on this. I think just the enterprise bid on this. We're also required to bid it out on an annual basis, so. Uh, no, the law is slow in catching up with uh, posting legal advertising, for instance, on the internet.
That's my question.
So no, we're we're still in the paper, newspaper age. Um, I think we said county just started accepting legal filings by the internet within the last year, so, uh, but this is us, this, these are state rules that we're following.
Okay.
So there are numerous codes, sections within the government code and the civil code that require legal advertising to be to be done in a newspaper of general circulation within the area of our jurisdiction.
And a newspaper, is that in hard copy? Is that, is there anything about that? Or does it say a newspaper that's adjudicated online or or how does that?
I haven't dealt, I haven't, I haven't uh, researched that issue, but I'm pretty sure it's a uh, print, newspaper print.
Okay. All right. That was just for kind of my information. All right, so uh, with that, do I have a motion for item D? Yes. Oh, question? Sure, go ahead.
Um, to our city attorney, you mentioned that the city of Merced is recently started uh, having these advertisements online.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. I meant it's the court, the courthouse.
Okay, all right.
The court system is now
Accepting things online and starting to catch up with the times, but uh, this not, this is not part of that.
So it doesn't apply to municipalities yet?
No.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Well, if, are there any other questions?
Any other questions from people? Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to make a motion to accept item D uh, of the consent agenda as submitted.
Ms. Freya?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Freya to accept item D as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Thank you. Item eight, public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item eight A, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of the resolution adopting new utility rates for water, wastewater and solid waste service fees. Item A one, City Council Resolution Number six oh eight five, amending the current billing procedures for water, wastewater treatment, wastewater collection and disposal and solid waste rates. Item eight A two, City Council Resolution Number six oh eight six, establishing rates for water service fees. Item eight A three, City Council Resolution Number six oh eight seven, establishing rates for wastewater service fees. Item eight A four, City Council Resolution Number six oh eight eight, establishing rates for solid waste service fees. And what I'm going to do now is I'm going to go to uh, Mrs. Williams for a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight I'm gonna give you a brief overview of the Prop two eighteen process and the proposed rate increase.
Do you do laptop thing?
Yes, please. Great, thank you. So beginning with the Prop two eighteen process, on March twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, the council authorized staff to release the public hearing notice. Um, the public hearing notice advises property owners and ratepayers of the proposed rate increase and how to protest. Um, we must mail that notice within a minimum of forty-five days prior to the public hearing. Today's the public hearing. We mailed that out on April nineteenth. Um, again, written protests from a majority of owners of rate uh, ratepayers, there are twelve thousand, excuse me, there are twelve thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine parcels. So the majority vote would mean that we would need to receive six thousand, one hundred and fifteen protests. Um, and again, this applies to water, wastewater and solid waste increases. Um, this is kind of hard to see, but what this is, is previous increases. And the reason why I wanted to show this is because the last time we did a rate study was back in two thousand and ten and we put those rates into effect beginning in two thousand and eleven and carrying through two thousand and fifteen. We hadn't done rate increases in so long besides the CPI that we're asking for tonight, that we had rather large increases. And if you take a look at it, just beginning in September of two thousand and eleven, um, we altered this to actually be a little less of an increase the first year, but the wastewater alone, we had to increase by forty-one percent. Water was just under one percent and solid waste was one point two seven percent. So in that first year, we increased rates by ten point three four percent. The next year was twelve percent, the following year is five point eight percent and five point eight percent, and then again, five point seven percent. So what we're trying to do here is avoid something like that. We're just trying to keep up with the inflation cost of salaries, benefits, uh, supplies and services, and also contract contracted rates.
Mr. Mayor, um, before you move forward, um, could you let this council know?
Wait, wait, Mrs. Lewis, let me, let me, go ahead and press your button. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, prior to two thousand and eleven, what was the last time that the city had increased anything?
So we did, actually did an increase to CPI in two thousand and nine. And we were um, pretty consistent with CPI increases back then. We did two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. Um, they were about three point two percent, four percent, and then three point three percent. Um, prior to two thousand and seven, it was two thousand and then two thousand and one. And those, again, were were just CPI increases and didn't take into effect the other costs that were ongoing, such as infrastructure and equipment needs.
Thank you.
So the Consumer Price Index, um, we use San Francisco and the reason that we do use San Francisco is because there's only four areas that are offered. And those include Los Angeles, Riverside, San Diego, and then of course, the San Francisco Bay Area. These do not just pick out the cities alone, but they are surrounding areas. And just with the the location of the other three, being down in Southern California, the Bay Area best fits people in this area and it is, we've used it in the past consistently. Um, it is written into our contract rates that way. Uh, the contract that we have with Allied Waste, which we'll talk a little bit about later. Um, it's, their increase is based on CPI and it is using the same index. Um, so prior CPI increases prior to this one are for the last several years. In two thousand and sixteen, it went up three percent. In two thousand and seventeen, it was three point four percent. In two thousand and eighteen, it was three point six percent, and now it's, or in two thousand and nineteen, it's three point five percent. And we haven't increased any uh, for any of those inflation, inflationary rates. In fact, the last time our rates went up was in two thousand and sixteen. So an overview of the rate increases, these are the the inflationary increases that the city is taking into account and why are we asking for this rate increase. So the cost of living increase to employees, and I'm only going back to two thousand and eighteen. I'm not trying to dig all the way back to where um, we last did increase the rates. But in two thousand and eighteen, uh, employees were given a COLA of three percent, the following year, two and a half percent. And in twenty twenty fiscal year, which the budget hasn't come forth for approval yet, there's a three percent proposed, and that's only proposed for unrepresented employees. The increase to PERS alone, which this is retirement rates for those employees in two thousand and eighteen was almost three percent. In two thousand and nineteen was three percent, and then this year is anticipated to go down temporarily by almost two percent because we paid off uh, a side pot fund balance. It was a a small minor loan, uh, but that'll pick right back up in twenty twenty-one. And then increases to health, we did see a drop in two thousand and eighteen of six percent. However, we did have an increase in two thousand and nineteen of nine point two one percent. And then um, we are anticipating a increase this year of ten percent. And then finally, gas and electric, this is a five-year average for these services. Um, it's just easier to do that way because they're kind of up and down. Water is, it was a five percent increase over the last five years, wastewater six percent and solid waste is six percent. So personnel, supplies and services, they climb at an inflationary and growth rate, both of them. And it's, it's, most of these are out of our control. PERS is out of our control, health is out of our control, PG&E is out of our control, and these are the costs that we're trying to get up, keep up with and not get so behind on our rates. So just to give you a little overview, I hope I missed a skip a page. Um, our solid, in addition to the rates that we just discussed, our solid waste contract also has a built-in increase to our um, contract provider. So for the um, last several years, we've been paying them that increase, but we haven't passed that increase on to the consumers. We've actually been um, paying that um, ourselves, which is something that we should have picked up. So whatever the CPI, the same CPI, the San Francisco CPI increases by, our contract rates go up by eighty percent of that CPI. So the ones that are highlighted here in yellow, those are increases that we pay to our contractors. So the two point four percent, the two point seven, two percent, and the two point eight eight percent without increasing our rate. So for the past three years, we haven't passed these rates on to the consumers. In two thousand and nineteen, beginning July first, it will increase by another two point eight two percent. And that is something that we are asking for at this time to to include in these proposed rates. Fund balances, we discussed this a little bit at our budget workshop for you, those of you that were there. Um, the fund balance in water is twenty-one point five million dollars. The CIP, which are the the capital improvement plan, so those are any infrastructure needs and any equipment needs that we might have just for the next five years as it is at twelve and a half million dollars. And then of course, there's the issue of chromium six that everybody's talking about. There's an agenda item on tonight to talk about cleanup, but um, there are concerns about what the state mandate's gonna be and what we're going to have to do to to clean up the chromium six. Um, so these are all costs that we have to take into consideration when increasing these rates. The wastewater or the sewer fund balance is six point four million dollars. And as you can see, the projects that we need over the last, the next five years are beyond that at eleven point two million dollars. Solid waste or garbage, the fund balances at six point nine million dollars. Um, the the projects that we need over the next five years are one point eight million dollars. But again, we need to take into consideration the annual increases to our contractor that we're paying. And just to give you an overview, um, so what I do want to remind everybody of is, yes, we are asking that this current fiscal year, beginning July first of um, two thousand and nineteen, that we increase the rates by three and a half percent because the CPI is three point five six percent. However, the following years, the four years after that, aren't necessarily increased by three point five percent. They can be increased up to three point five percent. So if CPI decreases, then there's no rate increase. If it, if CPI increases by one percent, then our rate increase would only be at one percent, not at the three and a half percent. However, for chart purposes and because it is um, the highest amount that it could go up to, I did on this um, show it at three and a half percent. Obviously, I can't assume that CPI is gonna be any less than that, but there is a cap. So for instance, if CPI increases by four percent in any given year, our rates could still only increase by three and a half percent. They can't go any higher. They can always go lower, they can't go higher. So just for the first year, just to give you an idea, um, the bottom, the lighter blue color there is uh, the water rates. The middle blue color is the the wastewater or the sewer rates. And then the top color is the solid waste. So um, currently, the water rate is twenty-one twenty-five, and in twenty twenty, it would increase to twenty-one ninety-nine. The sewer is twenty-seven twenty-seven and it would increase to twenty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. And the garbage is thirty-seven ninety-nine and it would increase to thirty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. That's a three dollar and three cent increase to your bill on a monthly basis, approximately thirty-six dollars and forty cents annually for the minimum payment. Of course, if you use additional water, then you would see an additional increase over the twenty-one ninety-nine. And then you can look at um, the years after that. And again, it it's the max that they can increase by. If you look in your staff report, there is a also a detailed list of what the max is. Um, discounting rates, I know we've had some questions in the past. And so Prop two eighteen states that you cannot subsidize a discount, making it paid by ratepayers. So basically, what that's saying is I, we can't offer a senior citizen's discount or a low um, income discount through that fund. So we can't discount a water rate because you're a senior citizen. It cannot be picked up by the other taxpayers. What you can do are use alternative sources of money. And two examples of that, the only two that I could come up with would be uh, the general fund subsidizing whatever enterprise fund that you chose to make a discount on, or donations. And the reason I put donations on there is because in the past, we did have a couple of programs. We had one through um, MCAG and we had one through the Salvation Army. Unfortunately, neither of those, right now there is not funding available with either of those, so we haven't had them in the last two years. And then just to give you a little comparison of what the other cities in our area are doing, I highlighted Los Banas in yellow just to see, just so you can see where we are, but we went through and called all the different cities to see um, what they were currently doing, and this is what their rates look like. So we're the second lowest in the area. Um, Gustine is the first lowest and Gustine um, is actually in the process of raising the rates. Livingston is in the process of raising the rates, and I've heard rumors, but it's not official, that Dos Palos is doing the same. So you're gonna see these increases for the other cities as well. Um, the city of Merced was increasing, but certain services, and unfortunately, I don't remember which those were. I could look through my notes and then didn't, I don't think Outwater had any plants at at the time I wrote this staff report. And then finally, in addition, so there are four resolutions for you tonight. Um, Resolution six zero eight six, six zero eight seven, six zero eight eight are specific to the water, wastewater and solid waste rates. The first reso listed there is six zero eight five. And we always do that when we bring rates forward, and what this does is amend the current billing procedures for those three um, processes. And there is something new this year or coming up for next year. It's Senate Bill nine nine eight. And what that is, is it's um, it adjusts um, and changes the current shut-off procedures. So if you saw in your staff report, there are a lot of examples on things that we can no longer do as a water department. And one of them is um, as simple as, from now on, our procedures need to be posted on our website in both English and Spanish. Um, a second one is that we may not discontinue residential water services due to delinquent payments for at least sixty days, which actually is already our process, so we're already doing that. Um, another is that water systems must um, limit certain low-income customers' reconnection fees to no more than fifty dollars during regular business hours and a hundred and fifty dollars during off-hours. And so instead of doing that for low income, we're just going to make that the amount across the board. And then also, there are certain rights to doing shut-offs. So um, one thing that we honor now is a doctor's note, but in combination with a doctor's note and proving that you're low income, we wouldn't be able to shut you off. We would have to offer a secondary payment option. Um, so that's all outlined in this resolution. In addition to that, um, we are asking to adjust the deposit amount because we currently have a deposit of a hundred dollars. People are required to pay the hundred-dollar deposit when they start services. Unfortunately, they are allowed to go two months out without paying before they get shut off. So being two months out doesn't, the hundred-dollar deposit doesn't cover your bill. Um, we would need to increase the deposit to two hundred dollars. And in order to help people pay for that, instead of um, requiring that the two hundred dollars is made when they start services, we would, if if they weren't able to do that, we would take the first hundred dollars when they started services, as we do now, and then add the second hundred, the second half of the deposit to their first bill. So they would be required to pay it then. But then at least after sixty days, we do have a lot of people that just skip out on their bill. Their deposit would cover the entire bill instead of a portion of it. So that is one of the other asks in Resolution six zero eight five. And so tonight, staff's recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, um, tabulate the written protest and adopt the resolutions as submitted. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, so council, if it's okay with you, I'm I'm uh, I have um, something I'd like to follow. So I'd like to go to the city attorney now, and there'll be time for council questions a little bit later on, if that's all right. Is that okay? All right. So now I would go to city attorney Vaughn to uh, give us some legal particulars, okay?
Thank you, Mayor, council members, audience members. Um, I'm required by Prop two eighteen to read this statement into the record, so please bear with me. The purpose of the statement is to give you, if you haven't already, uh, another explanation of the two eighteen process and what your rights are under Prop two eighteen. So again, bear with me, it's a long statement. Uh, the city council will now conduct a public hearing. The requirements of Article thirteen D, Section six of the California Constitution, which are known as Prop thirteen, or two eighteen, uh, have been up to now and are being followed for the conduct, the the conduction of this uh, public hearing. The date and time of this hearing is not less than forty-five The date and time of this hearing is not less than 45 days after the mailing of the notice of the hearing. The notice of the public hearing for the proposed rate increases was mailed, postage prepaid, and deposited in the U.S. Postal Service to each record owner who is subject to the proposed rate increases, to the city's water, wastewater, and solid waste service fees to be established, and any tenant who is directly liable for the payment of such fees. A record owner under Prop 218 means the owner of a parcel whose name and address appears on the last equalized secured property tax assessment roll. The purpose of this public hearing is for the city council to hear and consider all protests and objections concerning the proposed rate increases. Property owners and tenants directly liable for the payment of water, wastewater, or solid waste service fees are not required to provide oral testimony at today's hearing, or tonight's hearing, in order to submit a written protest, and I believe we've already received some protests in the mail. If you wish, you may simply submit your written protest tonight, if you haven't done so already, directly to the city clerk at today's public hearing. However, if you wish your protest to be, to the proposed increases, to the fees, to be counted, you must submit a written protest prior to the close of tonight's public hearing. You'll have an opportunity to do that in a few minutes. The public hearing will be closed after the city council has heard and considered all oral testimony on these items. Oral protests, such as what we heard a few minutes ago, can be heard but cannot be counted in determining whether or not a majority protest exists. Written protests must specify which rate or charge is being protested, and must include your name, parcel number, and/or service address, and your signature. So tonight's hearing is going to be conducted as follows. First, the city council will consider all protests. If written protests against the proposed rate increases for the water, wastewater, or solid waste service fees are presented by a majority of the owners of the identified parcels upon which the fees are to be imposed, and any tenants directly liable for the payment of those fees, the city council may not impose the rate increases for which the city has received a majority protest. And we're talking about three rate increases tonight. If written protests against any or all of the proposed rate increases are not presented by a majority of owners of the identified parcels upon which the proposed rate increases will be imposed, and any tenants directly liable for the payment of the fees, the city council may go forward and impose the rate increases. Pursuant to California law and determining if a majority protest exists, only one written protest, whether filed by an owner or a tenant of the parcel, may be counted. That's the process.
Before we go on, anything to add?
No.
Okay. Before we go on, there was a, there was a question about water quality, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about what I know, and then I'm going to ask our Public Works Director Fauchin, Mr. Fauchin, to fill in some more of the blanks as to why we send out letters on water quality. And like Judy said, I've also lived in this community all my life, and the chromium VI that they're referring to is a problem that comes down from the hills. It's not a man-made carcinogen as, as, as people would, would think to say, did, did people in the city of Los Banos cause this? And to our knowledge, and I'll say that again, to our knowledge, this is a, the chromium VI, the chemical that we're referring to, comes down from the hills and gets into the aquifer. So there are cities along I-5 that have a chromium VI problem within different limits. Now, the federal regulation for chromium VI, and I've spoken in Washington, D.C. about this, and no one wants to listen, because their rates, their, their levels of chromium are 100 parts per billion, billion total chromium. Now, all chromium is not bad for you, there are other parts of the chromium that, that are, are acceptable, but the one that we're referring to is chromium VI. Now, 100 parts per billion means 100 eyedrops in an Olympic-sized swimming pool. That's what 100 parts per billion means. So our chromium VI is anywhere between 30 and 40 parts per billion, depending upon the wells that we have, and I'll have Director Fauchin, if I misspoke on anything, please correct me. And so, the level of California used to be 50 parts per billion. So why didn't you ever hear about chromium VI? And people have asked me that question all the time, and it says, "You never told us about chromium VI." Well, chromium VI at 50 parts per billion, it wasn't something that the state of California required anyone to report. It was in the water, but, of all the analysis, but, but no one ever looked at it. Then the State Water Resources Board dropped the, how do I put this? They dropped the standard to 10 parts per billion. And when they did that, they put cities and wells out of commission according to, according to their standards, at 10 parts per billion. Then, when they found out what they did, the attorneys got involved, and so at this point, I'll have Mark continue with that, of where we are with the chromium VI level, because then they, they said, "Well, that's just too harsh, and now we're going to decide on another level." So now, law, the law comes into pass because someone sued or complained about the level of chromium VI. So now, I don't know what the current level is, or even if they've settled that case. But chromium VI has been in our water for, I'm going to say, 50, 60, 70 years, somewhere around there, at, at least to my knowledge. And our wells vary as to the amount of chromium VI that is in each well, and we have about 17, 18 wells, somewhere around there. So I'm going to ask Director Fauchin to, to kind of fill in some of the blanks, and then if I misspoke on anything, I want him to please correct.
Just a couple of clarifications. The state of California is the only, the only state that has a chromium VI MCL. No other state has it, this federal government doesn't have it. The federal government has 100 parts per billion for total chromium. The state has 50 parts per billion for total chromium, and used to have 10 parts per billion for chromium VI. The city has 95%, we always pass the total chromium, we always have in the past, but 95% of our chromium is chromium VI. And from USGS studies and things like that, they believe it's from the serpentine in the foothills. So we are the only state that has a chromium VI level at all, and we always have met total chromium, and we have to meet both of those now, or we did. The 10 parts per billion, and as the mayor did mention, we are in 25 to 40 parts per billion on all 13 of our wells are only source of water. And that has been pretty typical, you go back to when they have tests for chromium VI and it's been plus or minus five parts per billion forever, as long as those tests have been around. So it hasn't changed, that, the water hasn't changed, the standard has. What happened when 10 parts per billion was accepted, was, was the new MCL, some of the disadvantaged communities could not meet, there's a huge financial issue to meet this, and that issue goes to the citizens, it's not the cities, it's the citizens that pay the money. So the 10 parts per billion was rescinded. We do not have a chromium VI standard at the moment. We will. They're looking at it, and they're analyzing the financial implications to disadvantaged communities. But we will have a chromium VI standard. I mean, the environmental groups sued the state of California to put this in, I don't think, it will not disappear, and it probably will be in the 10 range. So we'll still be in the same situation. And it was mentioned, we do have a 10-year work plan, which was rescinded also when the standard was rescinded. We still are working on that work plan, but it was rescinded. So we aren't, we're not in, we're not out of compliance with any MCL for the state of California at this moment. There's no doubt in my mind, when it does get accepted in the next year or two, we will go back to the same situation. And I think that's all I can offer at this moment.
Congressman Dennis Cardoza, he hooked us up with a company called Hoganus of America, and they're also in Australia, I believe, weren't they, or, or New Zealand? Do you remember?
All over the world.
All over the world. And they came in, and they, they did a test, and, and they could, you know, for the right price, we can get the chromium down to zero or within two. But one of the prices that was given to me at one time was $80 million, and then $3 million a year in filters. So the gentleman from the Bay Area who spoke, you know, I called some people in the Bay Area to find out, and their water bills are in the hundreds, 300-plus dollars a month, approaching $400, and that's what people in the Bay Area are paying now for water store and garbage. And, and so, as, as Mr. Fauchin said, at some point, there are, there are two ways to go, there's a crossroads for us, depending upon what happens with the state, and now the attorneys are involved, and ultimately, someone is going to set the chromium VI Like I said, the State Water Resources Board did it, and then they challenged them right away. And have to understand that if tests get better, they can test for more things, and they can get the test down to where you should say 0% in everything. And that's just not going to happen. So the crossroads at some point could be for Los Banos, that we go to surface-treated water, which means that we have to buy water from another source, and we don't use our wells. And if that ever happens, I can tell you that, I hope I'm not mayor, because the cost is going to be astronomical to do that. Not that I hope I'm not mayor, I just hope I don't have to make that decision. But it's, 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 the cost will be astronomical if we have to buy water from another source. So I felt it was important that I give you my perspective and have Mr. Fauchin give you a perspective, because these comments came up, and in total transparency, we need to tell you everything, and so you can comment on that and ask questions to make sure that we're not leaving anything out. But, and then the other way is, the crossroads would be, is where are we going to find the 70 or 80 million plus $3 million a year for filters if the state comes down with a chromium VI level and says, "You have to attain that level." And, and I can tell you, it's like an unfunded mandate, because I don't know if any money's going to come down from the state, because the feds don't want to hear about it, because they're at 100 parts per billion. Arizona is something like 50 to 60 parts per billion that they accept, and California's the one that has the, the standard. So I'm not a physician, I can't tell you all, if any, any side effects with chromium VI, but, but I can tell you that, that parts per billion means, at 30 to 40 parts per billion, you take an eyedropper, and you drop it 40 times into an Olympic-sized swimming pool, and that's what the level, that's how, that's basically the, the simplest way to explain what parts per billion would be. So with that, what I'd like to do now is, I would allow, now like to open the public hearing, please bear with me as I read this. As you come forward to speak, please identify yourself and your address, but not, just tell us your, your name and city of Los Banos. You will have the customary five minutes to speak. This is a public hearing for the receipt of public testimony. Therefore, there will not be city council or staff responses during the hearing. So we're not ignoring you, it's just that the way things have to be conducted throughout the state of California, and we have to follow those rules. A discussion of the proposed rates by the city council will take place after the close of the hearing and prior to any action being taken. If you do not wish to speak at today's hearing, but would like to submit a written protest to any of the proposed rate increases, you may do so at any time before the close of the public hearing. The city clerk is available to accept any written protest throughout the public hearing. We will now hear from anyone who wishes to come forward to speak. So I am now opening the public hearing on City Council Resolution 6085, 6086, 6087, and 6088, as read by title. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
At the resident of Los Banos, to my knowledge, the dump trucks of AW, they, they go straight into Billy Wright Road and dump, dump off. I don't believe Billy Wright Road has increased costs to them for dumping. Why should there be an increase? For the last three weeks, I have reported a miss by AW. I've also had to call the Los Banos office and been forwarded to the Fresno office to tell them that my garbage has been not dumped. This has gone on for three weeks, it happens to be four or five days till they dump it, till the next dump cycle, by then, my garbage is already backed up. I then called for an additional dump, of which they charged me $7, $7.76, and never came to dump the garbage that had been left over, because they're, they're missing their dumps. The water situation, the wastewater after treated is being dumped into the, the wetlands by all cities. I believe Dos Palos is dumping it into the San Joaquin. These, all these waters, who's, who's, who's paying for the ducks and the wildlife that are being, you know, they, they gotta drink our shit? Who's, who's paying for them?
Please watch your language.
They're drinking, they're drinking the black water, I mean, treated black water, great water. Who cares about them? Where's the money? I mean, this, this money's going to pay for increase in salaries of what people are not increasing in their duties. The trash cans that have nothing in them, that they're being charged a rate when there's nothing in them, they shouldn't be charged. There should be a picture on the, on the truck and a weighing machine. If there's nothing in that garbage, they should not be charged. BPing $100. And Visalia and Clovis, they're being charged $35 for wastewater, I mean, you're giving the highest prices of $300, $400, but they're being charged almost, and A&W's in front of Fresno, and they're being charged that rate right next to them. You guys were being ripped off, and that's not a joke. That's no joke, we're being ripped off.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public hearing on these resolutions?
I'm a little confused. And I know you can't answer me, but... Oh, I'm sorry. It's Joan Filasco LaSavia, I'm a Los Banos resident. In fact, I grew up here, so I'd like to see this town get back to what it used to be and grow even better. When you, Mr. Mayor, quoted the, the rates for San Francisco...
I said Bay Area.
Of the Bay Area, of $400 plus a month in utilities. I am confused where that number comes from, but again, I want to highlight, their median income is above $100,000 a year. Now, if we have an average income here of $17,000 a year, and we increase, increase these rates, what's going to happen? People, we talk about, we just had this major cleanup, and, you know, hats off to what wasn't dumped in the streets, but there's going to be more dumps in our streets. It's not good for our city, it's going to cost us a lot more to clean that up. I think that the person I followed made a good point. If, if there isn't a dumpster, if there isn't a dumpster to pick up, because it's empty, why are we being charged if there would be a, a way to facilitate that awareness? Now, I am responsible for three properties of which I frequently call, I want to say once a month, the garbage people to say, "Look, I qualify for handicap backyard service, all three of these sites do, and yet, you're not picking them up." Why, why is that? Why is it that my cans are still in the street two days later? Why is it that sometimes you haven't picked up the full garbage? Now, the other thing I'm confused about is, we're in contract with garbage, so why are we automatically in contract that they have a non-negotiated rate increase? I don't think that's good business. I think we can put this out to other contracts, and... and possibly get that negotiated price down. When you're a shoe in the bag, there isn't any reason to lower your price. So the water is a huge issue. We can't charge people more water for water that they can't drink and have to go out to buy. So they're, in essence, already have increased their water bill. We just can't do that in good conscience. And that's very poor business sense. I don't know anyone that pays more for inferior quality. I really, really want this council to consider what's best for the city long term. If the city goes down in the quality of its appearance, we are all going to lose and there's going to be a lot of hidden costs that I don't think we're talking about here tonight. That's hindsight. Hindsight, but let's do this with foresight. In the long run, we'll spend much less money. We'll have a much better city. And you'll have your residents far more respected. I think it's quite worrisome when I heard Judy Eriart say, well, you're not going to do anything about it anyway. That apathy is very, very poor for the morale of this city. I mean, come on, morale? Graffiti, morale? Who do you attract here but lower income? Less, more people that can walk out without paying your water bills or your... I think that's a great plan. If you gotta make a deposit, I think that's good. Make a deposit to cover two months' rents, if that's two months of service, if that's what it is, make it possible that people don't have to choke that up initially because there will be many people who cannot. So I think that's responsible to our residents. But this is far larger than just people not wanting their utility bills to rise. This has got a forecast of a very negative landscape for this city. I'm asking you to really, really think forward. What you're going to say to yourselves ten years later when you look back and you say, oh, you know, those businesses that we want to attract that keep this city afloat, that may pay for our eighty million dollars to get the chromium out of our water or at least help subsidize it, are long gone. They've gone elsewhere. We need to attract them.
Okay. Thank you, your time. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hi, John. Pedro Bosn, a resident of Los Vanos. And I just wanted to mention, when I first moved here, one of the things, we bought a brand-new house. One of the things that my father-in-law told me was we need to get a water softener. So that's like, you move into a town, you buy a brand-new house, you have to pay for a water softener now. That's an additional cost just to... I didn't know why, but I take showers every day and my skin's peeling. My skin's dry, it's falling. I mean, I work in construction. It's already destroyed from that. Now I have to come home and take a shower in the same water. The quality of the water is not the same as the Bay Area. The Bay Area water is, you don't need a water softener. I mean, it's something nice to have, but over here, it's almost like you almost need it. I haven't lived in there more than a year. I've had problems with my water heater. And it's going to get covered under the warranty, but the point is, those are additional costs that I physically have to pay on top of that just because of the water quality. I've had, I can't even wash my car in my front yard because I'll have water stains, hard water. That's mainly the water side. So the cost, it's like, yes, we want to compete with the Bay Area, but the quality isn't there like some of the other members here we're talking about. Also waste, like this gentleman was talking about was, in San Jose, my father-in-law has a smaller trash can because he doesn't use as much waste. He doesn't produce the same amount of waste. So in San Jose, they have that option. If you want a smaller trash can, you pay less and you don't have to have the huge trash can that's empty. So you cut costs right there according to each consumer. Maybe that could be an option. Yard waste was something that you just pile up in the front of your house. It was unlimited. They would come and scoop it up with the truck. They have a whole system for that. I think it actually works out really good. I think there's things that you guys can develop on from that. It's not just San Francisco. I understand, I grew up in Fremont and Fremont is overpriced. Cost of living there is just insane. I'm not going to go back over there. That's why I'm here. I can't afford to live out there. And if this area turns into that, I have to move from here and just work my way down. I work in construction. I work every day. You know, it's hard. Just thank you for your time.
Thank you. The, hang on, let me get this. Let me finish this first and I can make some comment. Okay. Anyone else who wishes to speak?
My name is Stan Silver. I am a resident of the city of Los Vanos. I've heard these, you know, these people give their opinions. I was born here and our water comes from deep wells. Not to correct anybody, but you know, chromium is a natural occurring element, even though Aaron Brockovich definitely hurt us. But if you have deep wells, you're going to have different qualities of water and it's going to be hard. But if we had surface treatment, it would cost a fortune. It would cost, you know, just a lot of money. We're working with, well, I'm sorry, not we, but the public works, is working with what we have. And I just feel that we're kind of in a difficult time. And again, with the standards, it was nice to hear that they may change the standards. And yes, Los Vanos, if you live here, if you don't want water spots, either better wipe it quick or you better buy a water softener. That's just how it is. Also, there was a comment about the, maybe I'm lucky, but I haven't had any trouble with the garbage, you know, the pickup. They've been really great and responsive if something did happen. To the best of my knowledge, and maybe something kind of alarmed me because I thought this gentleman said about the sewer treatment. From what I understand, sewer treatment is a tertiary, so the water really doesn't leave. It's evaporative. So it evaporates. They take a measure every day to see how much has been evaporated. And then it does go on to land, irrigate a crop. The water board, you know, from the best of my knowledge, they're not going to let you just dump it. And the new regulation that did go into effect was on the other active type treatment. Their affluent, the water leaving, their anti-use were tighter than your drinking water. So they've tightened a lot of things up. I just know that this is a difficult position that everybody's in. And I can understand where people are coming from. But from my point, it's kind of like when you have a problem and you just take everything and put it on the table and go, this is what we got to work with and you got to make a decision and you just work with what you got. I still think that the people working in it, I think they're doing an outstanding job. And I just hope that we direct some of our ideas towards the water board and towards the people that are tightening up these regulations. It's unfairly putting a burden on us. And then you guys got to make the decisions. I think I've said enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? No, you've already spoken once. Is there anyone who wishes to turn in a written protest? Okay. Seeing no others who wish to speak. Okay.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I had to go to the bathroom. I'll just talk about water.
I don't mean to explain Asian daddy.
I wanted to let you know that I personally don't have a problem with my water or my garbage service or anything else the city provides. What I would like to see is maybe a lower increase per year because I know you have to increase. But I would also like to see us somehow get a CPI that is more logical for the Central Valley. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay. Seeing no others who wish to speak on these matters, I am prepared to close the public hearing. However, before I do that, I would like to provide anyone who would like to submit or withdraw a written protest to do so now. Once the public hearing is closed, the city may no longer accept any protests on the proposed rate increases. Is there anyone who wishes to submit a written protest? Okay. Seeing or hearing no one, I will now close the public hearing. We will now take a five-minute recess and hereby direct the city clerk and the city staff to complete the tabulation of the written protests received. Okay, so we're going to take a five-minute break. Wait, wait, wait.
Oh.
Okay.
I have seventy-seven written protests.
Okay. If a majority of the protests does exist, no further consideration of the item will happen. Seventy-seven is not a majority. If the majority of protests does not exist, we will now say the city clerk has advised us that a majority protest does not exist for the adoption of the proposed rate increases to the water, wastewater and solid waste service fees. The city council will now consider the adoption of the proposed rate increases. Do any members of the city council wish to speak on items eight A, two through, excuse me, one through four? Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Mr. Jones?
Yes, Ms. Williams, how many utility counts do we have right now? How many doors?
Twelve thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine. Twelve thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine.
And right now, are we short on covering our expenses for utilities? Or are we in the red or are we in the black?
Um, different for different funds.
Okay.
So, I didn't bring my budget book. Um, I believe that this, for this year, that the water is in the black. This, I can't remember if it was the sewer. I apologize. I can't remember if the sewer or the garbage. One of them is deficit spending for the year. But as I showed you on that slide, we do have a fund balance. So technically, we're in the black because we are allowed to dip into our fund balance. So we are currently in the black for all three accounts with the different fund balances that I mentioned earlier. Over twenty million for water, six million for sewer, and six million for garbage.
And do we have any foreseeable expenses that are gonna come up in the next year or two that will put us at a deficit on the water as well?
Um, at the water, because we don't know what the regulation is going to be with chromium six. There's a potential that that might put us into a deficit. We do have infrastructure programs or projects. We have twelve million for the next five years. But again, that's just for the next five years. So I can't anticipate anything further than that. Um, for garbage, we do have to do the dump closure, and that's another thing that we're not a hundred percent sure what the regulation is gonna be for closing that. That will definitely put us in the red when we have to do that dump closure. Well, I shouldn't say definitely. Depending on what the state comes back with, there's two options. And one, the more expensive option, which is the original option that we built in the prior rate study, we anticipated that we would have to bond out to do that project. So obviously, if we didn't bond out, we were deficit spending. Um, and the sewer at this point in time, the projects alone that we have for the next five years, we're over eleven million and our fund balance is six million. So yes, we, the sewer fund won't survive either.
Okay, so.
We're just infrastructure and equipment needs. Now, of course, we can take away those infrastructure and equipment needs, not do them, and let it suffer, and then we could survive a little bit longer.
Okay, so bottom line, in your opinion, in your opinion, is there any way to prolong this increase, say, for twelve months? Without being in the red?
I think that you would have to treat each fund separately. Um, I think that the worst one to do that would be to the water and the sewer account. I mean, I'm sorry, the sewer and the garbage. Um, the water, you probably can put off for a little bit. I wouldn't recommend it. But you can put it off. But anytime you put anything off, the infrastructure's gonna hurt, the equipment's gonna hurt, and depending on how long you decide to put it out, it could also potentially cause layoffs.
If we go in this five-year, uh, increase, or proposed increase, uh, term, if, say, year three and four, there's not any increases, let's just say there's none, we would be at zero, uh, zero increase. I mean, if we don't have any other capital improvements or anything that's unexpected breakdown or anything like that with our utilities, is that correct? We're not just gonna raise the rates just to.
No, we don't. We're not gonna raise the rates just to raise the rates. Obviously, we're gonna take the CPI into consideration, but there's always going to be inflationary increases. There's things that are gonna increase that we have no control over. So with or without the CPI increase, there will most likely always be a need for the small increase. Whether or not it's at three and a half percent, I obviously can't say today. I can say for the upcoming year that, yes, it's at three and a half percent.
Okay, so bottom line, no matter what, if we don't have any increases, we're gonna be in the red and are providing the same service that we are providing right now will start lacking.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And if a rate is not, and if an increase is not needed, even though it may say three percent, then we're not going to increase just to be increasing.
That's correct. If we're not ready to, if we're not seeing the inflationary increases that go along with the CPI, then no, we're not gonna increase it just to increase.
Okay, it's not just raising it with the CPI. It's seeing the inflationary costs that are associated with the particular, uh, wastewater.
That's correct.
Uh, water and, and, uh, and garbage, correct?
Yes, and, and that's why, um, the resolutions are brought to you in separate resolutions because each one is considered individually.
Okay.
One fund can't pay for the other.
Okay. And one, and one won't raise unless there's a need.
And one won't, exactly. So if there's not a need in water, but there's a need in sewer, then we can raise sewer without raising the water. Or maybe there's a higher need in one than the other, then yes, it can be a little bit different.
Okay, up to a certain point.
But again, up to three and a half percent. Nothing can exceed three and a half percent.
Okay, all right. Okay. Uh, Mr. Faria.
Thank you, Mayor. How long, Mr. Vaughn, maybe you can answer this. How long is the Proposition 218 good for, or this protest period?
How long is the?
If we've prolonged, how, how long could we wait before raising the rates under this protest period?
I, I think you need to act tonight.
You would need to act tonight, okay.
If you, if you're not gonna act tonight, then you're gonna have to go through the whole process all over again to change, to raise the rates.
Okay, that's the question I had.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Well, it's, this has been a difficult one, because I know the needs of the city. We, cost of doing business and whatnot. We are growing a bit, built some houses. The citizens just voted themselves two tax increases. Measure H and measure V. And they also voted, and not for the city or the county, but for the, for the school district voted to extend a school bond, which increases their taxes too. For me, and, and CPI, a lot of people don't realize CPI doesn't include food or gas or fuel. It's a consumer price index, but it doesn't include gas or fuel, uh, gas or food. And fuel and food costs have gone up very, a lot. I can't believe how much everything's costing now. And I know everybody's saying the same thing. And I know that we need the, the city, from our perspective, we really need this. But I would like to, to me, I wanna give our citizens about a year to breathe. And that's where I am on this. I'm, I'm not ready to raise any rates tonight at all. It's just from a perspective of looking at from what our citizens have been going through lately and what they've done and what they volunteered to do in a very big way. I mean, these, these bonds and these tax measures passed by huge numbers. And I think we need to respect that. Also, um, give these families a chance to catch up. We are picking up a little extra money in growth. We're not growing that fast, but we do pick up some extra with that. And that's how I feel about it. So that's why I asked about the 218. How long could it last? How long could we put it off? Someone will say, we can't put it off, we gotta get it done. But to me, um, from, I'm looking at it from the citizen's standpoint, that's where I am on this. Thank you, Mayor.
So, so let me clarify Mr. Faria's comments, and maybe you can help me out. So this is a five-year plan?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Faria, are you saying vote on this tonight for a four-year plan and delay it one year?
No, I don't, I don't wanna vote on any increases tonight at all. I wanna vote on another increase for another year.
Okay.
Okay, so if we choose to go that path, then obviously, there's costs associated with this. It costs us fifteen thousand dollars to mail out the notices. If you take a four-year plan as you're asking about, then you don't have to redo the notices. Um, so there are different options without having to do the notices, but still take this into consideration. But if you just disagree to all of these tonight, all the propositions tonight, then in order to redo it, to look at it in another year or however long down the road, it will, we will have to start from the beginning. So we'll have to re-notice it. And of course, the rates will increase at that point in time. The number of accounts will increase at that point in time. But just to let you know, it costs us almost fifteen thousand dollars to mail out the notices this year.
The, um, now, is five years the maximum? Is there a minimum or maximum amount of time that you?
There's not a minimum amount of time, but five years is the max.
Is the maximum, mm-hmm. Okay, yeah, I'm not even ready to do that tonight. I'm, I'm not in favor of any, any rate increase at all, um, tonight. But I'm just one councilman, there, council member. There are five of us here. And, um, everybody has to vote the way they, they see, from their perspective. I'm put here in this seat to vote from my perspective, and everyone else does the same, and I respect everyone else in that manner. Thanks.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a comment? Son, you could put, could you put the rates back up again for the different cities?
Sure.
Or is that possible? Oh, yeah. Hang on.
So again, yellow is the Los Banas, highlights for Los Banas of what the rate currently is this year and with the three-point-five increase, what it would be for next year. Um, the next in line would be the City of Merced, and they're at a hundred and ten dollars and eleven cents currently, and it will increase to a hundred and ten dollars and seventy-two cents. The next one is the City of Outwater. They're at a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fourteen cents, and right now, they don't anticipate an increase. The City of Livingston is at ninety-eight dollars and fifty-one cents, and they are currently working on an increase. The City of Gustine is at seventy-three thirty-six. It'll increase to seventy-four ninety, um, beginning July first, and they are actually additionally working on an increase with the increase that they already have built in for the next four years. And then the City of Dos Palos is at a hundred and two dollars, and they may or may not be working on an increase.
So I have personal knowledge of a couple of them.
Okay.
Atwater built a, a new facility, and it was, it was sorely needed, and then they needed to pay for that facility because, uh, the, um, the rates did not keep up with the, the inflationary costs. Am I, am I pretty much right on?
I believe so.
Yeah. And, and so that's why, uh, they are the highest because they, they, they built this new facility, and then it wasn't, it wasn't paid for. So now they have to make up those rates, and the citizens are paying quite a lot to do that. The City of Gustine is, they, they didn't have a wastewater treatment program or a, uh, a facility that would meet their needs, and so they weren't able to expand. So now they're gonna have to build this if they want to continue to grow and, and maybe get some of the amenities that, that the other cities have. So those, those are the kind, the knowledge I have of, of those two communities. One needs to catch up, one caught up, but it's costing a lot more money. And so when that happens, Los Banas is, is, is right in there for, for what we're charging. The, um, what I wanted to tell you before, and I just remembered, was that we're at the end of our term, pretty much, with the, uh, the, uh, the waste contract, the haulers. So that's something within the next eighteen months that's gonna be renegotiated. And so some of these things that were brought up tonight can be brought up when we, when we set the, uh, the new contract for the hauler. Now, now, someone asked us, why can't you just change it now? Because these are over ten-year contracts. And the only two people on this council that negotiated that, that, uh, that, uh, contract with Allied was, was Mr. Faria and myself. No one else was on this council. And, and so, uh, so the way the, 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 um, the haulers, they, they buy new equipment and they amortize it over ten years. And so this, uh, the, the contract is coming due, and so the city staff will be renegotiating that contract. You know, it, it's hard for me to say that just raise rates, and as Mr. Faria pointed out, he pointed out some good points. And, but putting the said city in negative numbers is, is, is kinda tough. So I wanna hear from the rest of the council too. Mr., Mrs. Johnson Santos.
Um, and I just wanted to make sure again, if you don't mind, for my clarification. Say if we were to go four years, wait a year and go the four years, you said there would be no extra cost for sending out, for sending out the mail-ins, correct?
Could you speak closer to the microphone?
Sure, sorry. Yeah, if you, if you adopt the rates tonight and you make a correction to it, you can still adopt at a different rate. So if you do that and you adopt the three resolutions, then no, I don't have to go back through the Prop 218 process for another fifteen years or if there's a contract change or something changes like that and we decide to, to do it for one reason or another. But if you do adopt the rates at whatever level tonight, then no, there's no reason to resend the notices.
Okay.
Is it possible to, like a hybrid, and I'm just throwing all this out, council, instead of a five-year plan, adopt a four-year plan and not institute that plan for a breather year?
It's possible.
All right. Thank you.
Well, I did, um.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, so I just wanted to get it out there that I, I know some time ago, about ten years, less than ten years ago, we had those nine and ten percent increases because we were trying to catch up. I have to be honest, that's my, I don't wanna see something like that happen due to that, but I, I, of course, I sympathize with our seventy-seven protests, those can't be discounted, and our residents here today. So if there is a way without additional cost to help with our residents, I'd like to see that. But I do wanna also not put us in a situation where it is, it is more harm in the end, so.
And I understand that, and, and what I'd like the council to take into consideration is that the last time we did raise the rates was in two thousand and fifteen, which means sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. We haven't had increases for the last three years. So, you know, they've had a little bit of break. We've seen our crosses. We have seen our costs increase, yet we haven't passed on any of those increases to the customers for the past three years.
Thank you. Anything else, Mrs. Santos?
Thank you.
Time, thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Ms. Williams. Um, if we do prolong it one year, defer it out a year before we start, do you feel that we're gonna be maxed out at the 3.5% for the next four years? And then when our, when the fifth year is up, have to increase by even a higher percentage instead of 3.5% to make up what we weren't charging adequately enough in the first year?
There's a possibility. Um, I think that our hands are a little bit tied because if the CPI comes in a little bit lower than the 3.5%, we won't be able to make the difference up there. Um, and we have capped ourselves at CPI or 3.5%. So that means that if CPI comes in at 2.7, I'm not even allowed to, to, to do it at 3.5 if I need the 3.5% increase. So that, by setting up a four-year po- program, may cause a problem because we need the increase now, and we might not have the ability to increase it at that higher rate over the next four years.
And do you feel if we were doing increases from 2015, we'd be at a lower rate?
At a lower rate?
Of in, increase, maybe down to two and a half, two and three quarters?
And we probably could have spread it out a little bit longer. But we, you know, unfortunately, we've, we've already allowed the fund balance to eat up some of those costs that we don't have any control over. But yeah, we would probably be, um, a little bit more consistent.
So basically, by doing steady annual increases, we would end up keeping our overall rates down?
That's correct. And, and that's the whole point. If you look at this rate increase, we, we don't want to get back to the point, you know, where we need a large increase like that. The only thing that should cause something like that is some unforeseen infrastructure need, or just, I, I, I don't even want to jinx it, like some type of catastrophe or major state law regulation that we just couldn't afford.
Well, let's face it, wages always increase. Electricity always goes up. I've never seen it go down. Expenses will always increase. Our capital improvements, or when our water lines bust, we have to plan for that. They all have a life stand, life, uh, a lifetime. I mean, they all have a time span on it, on how long they're gonna last. And we have to prepare for that because if we don't, we're gonna be without certain utilities. So I think this is crucial, that we do have minimum regular increases to kinda offset this. I mean, try to tell an employee, hey, we can't go up on wages, and it's been five years since they've had a wage increase. You know? This is all part of it. That's all.
Thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we, we have had several tax increases recently as a result of our community voting for it. And I'm very appreciative of what they've done for our community. And these type of expenses are just expenses that, um, no council member wants to pass on. But how, with everything that happens in the state of California, many, many unforeseen regulations coming down from Sacramento that are unfunded, uh, that deplete our general fund, this would only deplete it further if we didn't have the money in there to take care of the necessities of providing services to our public. Now, whether you agree with it or not, it's, it's just a fact of life. We, we have property tax increases that legally can be passed off onto us every two years. We have no say in it. I don't like paying increases in water bills, garbage and sewer, but we do have another project on the remainder of this agenda that we have up for discussion that may help us in some way. I, I just don't think it's good business practice when you have a business that continually, um, takes on the responsibility of eating a cost rather than calculating out increments so that it's not as hurtful to the public. I, I've seen that happen. I've worked in a situation recently where an organization hadn't done any CPI, um, increases for over 10 years. And the cost of products continued to go up. The cost of services continued to go up. And there was no money to give the employees any raises. So, um, you know, this, this is just something that's the public, um, I don't want to say the public has to, has to inherit, but it's one of those unfortunate things that we have to look at to, um, keep the cost of service down. I, I remember, I think in the past 10-plus years, you know, the water bill jumped tremendously, and I was really upset about it. And, um, you know, writing a protest, you, you, we'd have to have, as Sonia said tonight, over 6,000 people that would have to have a written protest. So that tells me that of the 12,000-plus households we have here in Los Banos, we didn't get anywhere near the 6,000 protests that we needed to, uh, not put this in effect. Whether people felt like they had no voice in it, or whatever the case may be, we still didn't have it. And I, I feel like it, you know, for myself, I didn't send a protest in because I sit up here and I, I get to hear and I get to see what the cost of doing business is here in the city of Los Banos. And, um, unfortunately, we, we do live in a, a county where it's farming, we have deep wells, uh, the water's been bad. All of the people who have grown up here and been born here, all of your lives, it's not changed. And I'm sure that there have been increases in the water bills over those periods of time. And unfortunately, we live in California. And the way things happen, uh, and the, the rates of increases that we incur for the cost of doing business are a lot different now than what they were 50 years ago. So, um, I, I would have to, you know, be in favor of this. I'm, I'm hoping that with the 3.5% that we're asking for over this period of time, that as Sonia has indicated, if there's no, uh, CPI cost, uh, increases, that we won't be passing those on to the public, and that will be a savings. But there are many things that are calculated into this cost other than just the service that's provided to you. It's the people that we employ. It's everything that she pointed out, uh, this evening that we have to pay, uh, in the city and make sure that those services are delivered to you. So, um, I appreciate everyone who's come here and, and has spoken to this council tonight and expressed their opinions about this. And I do take it seriously. And I'll be the first to speak if I think that something's really unreasonable in this city. That's just me. And we all have spoken on something that we feel very strongly about. But I see this as a small margin, and it may not be small to some, but for their overall, uh, for people who we have living in the city, and we have a lot of commuters who are, um, of a different income level than people who live here and work in Los Banos. So, um, and I, and I realize that a lot of that income of yours is probably going to pay for gas to, to drive over that hill. I used to be one of them. So I know the burden of, of what that cost is. But I have to say that I, I don't want to see our, um, services of this sort in the black anytime soon, especially in light of what we may have facing us in the future regarding Chromium 6. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to, you know, let the public know that, um, I have to be in favor of this increase tonight.
Okay. We were, where some of the cities were that I talked about, about, because they have to raise the rates out of necessity and raise them to a point that, that sometimes it's burdensome to their, uh, their, their citizens. Mr. Faria and I were on the, the council at a time when we were spending $250,000 more a month than we were taking in. And what, I don't like rate increases, but the staff we have now is not going to bring a rate increase that's not needed. And, and I believe that. I, I, I believe that, that if, and we have to believe our staff. And if we don't, then we're nowhere. But yet, we still have to question staff as to what we think is right and what, what we think the public can, can tolerate. The staff we have brought us some numbers. And after all this discussion, the, the rates that we're proposing are not going to be the rates, hopefully, that we're going to administer, depending upon what's needed and only what's needed. I, uh, I've talked to staff many, many times at length and, and questioned them to the point that, that sometimes it's, uh, it's overreaching. But I think all of us here have to do that in order to understand what is actually happening and how we should administer this city. Because as, as someone told me the other day, we as staff members salute the city council. And if the city council doesn't want it, we just go on the next day and we say, okay. And the research that we do doesn't mean anything because the city council vote is the one and the only one that approves these rates. And then we go on to another day, and then the staff administers what the city council approves. So we are going to be in negotiations with the hauler because a new contract is coming up for the, uh, for the, uh, the rate payers, for the, uh, uh, the, our, our garbage, our solid waste. I will tell you that, you know, information that this council doesn't have, because I sit on these different boards, Los Banos, and I'm gonna say aye, I'm gonna use aye once tonight, fight very hard to keep Billy Wright open. And Billy Wright is our dumping facility. Because at one time, they wanted to close that and truck our garbage 60 miles over to Merced. And I start asking, what is the cost of that in fuel? And what are our rates gonna go up? Well, it's more efficient to have all the garbage in one place. Yeah, for who? Not for Los Banos. So there's a lot of, of legwork that goes on with this city council backing the decisions that, that, that the mayor is going to make at another meeting where they decide that. So our Billy Wright facility needs to stay open in order for us to provide these minimal increases. And the ponds that we have, the evaporation ponds for the sewer, you can't get licenses for those anymore. So they are very efficient ponds, they're evaporation ponds. And cities that need to do their expansions have to go to different types of treatment, which is far more in cost than what the city of Los Banos has at this time. So they work. So a lot of planning in the past has gone into this, and it's saved the citizens a tremendous amount of money. And as you can see by what they're charging for these, these other cities. But you shouldn't use that because my father always said, you know, when you take a test, I want you to pass the test. I don't care what anybody else got. But it's, in this case, it does apply because we're trying to keep the rates as, as low as we possibly can. And I truly believe that the staff is, is, is attempting to do that and not asking for more than what they need. So I, I, I have to say that I'm not beaming about raising rates because we all have to pay it, all the council members, everybody has to pay it. But again, we have to keep the city solvent of all the, the unfunded mandates that are put upon us in many ways. And, and just because Mr. Faria can't raise rates at this time, we built a council of five members by not chastising one or two. And so that's the beauty of the five people that are up here. We all have five minds. And if someone doesn't agree, or, or whatever the vote is, it's, it's, we move on to another day. To fight is one, or is five. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, one thing else I want to point out. You know, in 2011, we had a 10, 10.34% increase. 2012, the following year, 12.06% increase. 2013, 5.83% increase. 2014, 5.86% increase. 2015, our last increase was 5.69. At 3.5% maximum, we're hedging our bets here. We're actually probably saving money as residents versus if we skip a few years, then we have to pick up on all our deferred maintenance and all our deferred, uh, expenses that we have, and it's gonna jump up even higher. So at least this, for the next five years, it's predictable what our expenses are gonna be. At the end of five years, we might actually be at a negative. Just depends on what the state of California decides to do with the way that we handle our water. If it's mandated that we have to put in special filters or special purifying systems in, that's just gonna blow our, uh, utility bills just out of the, out of the water right there. So I think, looking at this from a different viewpoint, that 3.5% increase is keeping higher expenses from coming for the next five years. So at least you have some fixed numbers to go off when you're planning your household budget. I know we all have to deal with the same increases up here for our own personal use. I think this is in the best interest, especially looking at our past history. We don't have anything on this board that's less than 3.5% increase during those time periods. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from council? Any other comments from staff? All right. I will now ask for consideration of item eight, A, 1, 2, 3, and 4. And we need to take those individually. So if, if someone is in favor of that, Mrs. Lewis?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve Resolution Number 6085 as read by title.
Do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
There's been a motion by Lewis, second by Jones, for the approval of City Council Resolution Number 6085. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition?
Aye.
Let the record reflect four yes, one no. Mrs., uh, let's see, let's go on to Mrs. Santos. We're at 6086.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6086.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Motion by Johnson Santos, second by Lewis, for the approval of City Council Resolution Number 6086. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition?
Aye.
Let the record reflect four yes, one no. Okay. Let's go on to item three, City Council Resolution Number 6087. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6087 as read by title.
Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Motion by Lewis, second by Jones, to approve City Council Resolution Number 6087. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition?
Aye.
Let the record reflect four yes, one no. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a, um, recommendation to approve Resolution Number 6088 as read by title.
Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Motion by Lewis for the approval of 6088 as read by title and second by Jones. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition?
Aye.
Let the record reflect four yes, one no. Thank you, council. Okay, let's go on to item B, Public Hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of the levy of the proposed annual assessment for 2019, 2020 fiscal of the levy of the proposed annual assessment for 2019, 2020 fiscal year for the landscaping and lighting districts 1 through 7 and 9 through 19. Mr. Fachen?
Thank you very much. Tonight's recommendation from staff will be to complete the preparation of the annual assessment of the city of Los Banas, 18 landscaping and lighting districts. We request the city council to take the following action: conduct a public hearing to solicit input on the landscaping and lighting district annual assessment, and adopt Resolution Number 6089 confirming the diagram and assessments and levying for the landscaping and lighting districts, numbers 1 through 7 and numbers 9 through 19 for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Every year at the meeting before the new budget is presented to you for approval or for your discussion, we present the landscaping and lighting districts to you and how they're doing. We at the city does administer 18 of the landscaping and lighting districts. And as I think I've been doing this for almost 12 years, presenting this to you, the fiscal health for the district has improved over the last 10 years greatly. 15 districts in 2009 and 2010 had a fiscal year ending balance that was in the negative. At the end of this 2019, 2020 fiscal year, if approved, we're estimating that three of the landscaping and lighting districts will have negatives. And these three, to be specific, one is Meadowlands, it's a district that's just located south of Pacheco High School. It is the highest one in the in the negative, and it's in negative by, I think it makes up a good percentage of it. It's estimated to be almost 500,000 in negative at the end of fiscal year 19 and 20. There is development on the north of Pacheco High, that's one tentative map's been approved, one is starting the process now. When this development does develop, the these, this district actually will daylight within about three or four years. So development, if it continues, as it is now, will make this very expensive negative carryover become positive or at least daylight out. There's another one, Magnolia Grove, and it's a very small district, District Number 15. And it's estimated to be out of the red at the end of the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. We're taking a little bit out of that each year, so. The last one is Talbot Park. This is also slowly decreasing a negative fund balance, and it's very slowly, I will be honest with you, there's a lot of areas. That's where Home Depot and areas like that drain into the basin that's located next to the the older high school, the older junior high, excuse me. All that stormwater goes to that basin, so there's a lot of unimproved lands that haven't been in this district yet, so we're slowly getting out of the negative, and as those lands develop, we should be able to to daylight that one, but it will take a while. If development continues by the end of the fiscal year 23, 24, we believe only the Talbot Park landscaping and lighting district will have a negative balance. So that's a lot, I think that's quite an improvement from where we were 10, 12 years ago. And having a flush landscaping and lighting districts does allow for more maintenance effort and more capital, and you'll see this year, we do have a lot of maintenance effort and capital because we have gotten some of these in the clear, and we can start concentrating a little bit more on the on the maintenance in those districts, improving the level of service from the 75 or 70 that it used to be, now up to the 85, 90 range that we want to be. So each each year, we, as we get more healthy, as we get healthier, we are able to put that money into maintenance and capital. And as I, as I said, each fiscal year, the city council holds a public hearing to confirm and authorize delivering of these assessments. The assessments are based on an annual report prepared by the Public Works Director, City Engineer. We have done public notices in the local newspaper on May 17, 2019. And the engineer's report does consist of six parts of, and only parts B and D are included in the staff reports. The other parts are the plans and specs and the list of names of people that live in those districts, and so that's quite lengthy in matter, and we did include that. Because just to let you know, and I always seem to get asked this question, so I looked ahead of time. In the landscaping and lighting districts, just on residential units, just on single-family homes, there's 7,969 residential units in the landscaping and lighting districts themselves. Now, total residential water services, not counting multifamily, there's about 11,500. It's about a 69% amount of single-family units that are now in landscaping and lighting districts. That does not include the apartment complexes, they actually have a commercial rate, I believe. So that's just to let you know what what we have there. If you go, if you go on my staff report, I believe it's three pages in, you'll see a list of improvements being scheduled in some of the districts. Some of the improvements are out of capital, and some are just maintenance effort ones. Some of the major ones would be in Ranchwood, we're going to continue doing the median strip replanning on Stonewood, we're going to complete the other three of them. We have a lot of playground repairs, which are maintenance. We're going to do college greens, replant some plants. We have irrigation and plants in the landscape strips along San Ramon in place in the St. Francis District. The Meadowlands, we're going to repair playground equipment in Meadowlands Park, that's out of the maintenance, that's not a capital. In Mission Estates, we have $20,000 of capital, and that's mainly to repair a pump and replace another storm pump in Verona Storm Station. We do have, in Senior Villages, which is the Cajunian project, we do have the first phase of irrigation repairs and plant replanting in the landscape strip along Colorado, which is bare. And that's a capital item. And then on the rail corridor, we do have a 20,000-yard capital item to repair irrigation and replant plants in the rail trail. But and it's interesting in the future, just to let you know, on our capital list for the future, what is planned, is planned in our capital budget. In 2021, we have $156,000 in capital in these districts planned. In 2021, 2022, we have $198,000 in capital in these districts. A lot of this is median repair and landscaping. In 2022 to 2023, we have 203,000 in capital. And in 2023 to 2024, there's half a million dollars in capital. This is in addition to the normal maintenance effort, which we believe is is getting better each year. A little little tighter on on those things. So the bottom line on these districts, to let you know where we're at, we have 18 districts. Two of them are the maximum increase, and they both are the ones that, two of the three that ruin the hole, it's on Meadowlands, we are asking for a maximum increase of 5%. And that's the one that had the half a million dollar deficit. And the Talbot Park one, we're asking for the maximum increase of 10%. The maximum increase is 10% on all except two of these. That's just written in the documents. So in this year, we're only asking for two maximum increases. And then there's two others, there's no increase at all, there's no increase either cost of living needed at all. And what you do is you look at, you look at what you're spending, and you can put 50% in a carryover fund, a balance forward with additional any capital you have, so you you kind of look at it in that sense, and if you're already at that point, you don't need the cost of living adjustment. We do have 14 that are asking for a cost of living adjustment of 3.5%. In future years, in the future years, it looks like we're going to have three or four maximum increases and about 14 cost of living increases if if they are needed, and this is assuming subdivisions continue at the pace they're going. So we definitely are approaching a healthier state each year with these districts. So I would gladly, yeah, what, this resolution, if if you do approve it, it is submitted as a to the county to put on the tax rolls, and these assessments are for the improvements for the 19, 20 fiscal year.
Thank you. Okay, council, with your permission, I'm going to open the public hearing first. All right, so at this time, is there anyone who wishes to speak on Council, City Council Resolution Number 6089 as read by title?
Kathy Ballard, resident of Los Banas. I have some concerns, or maybe you guys can rectify it for me. These lighting districts, the money that's collected in those districts is solely used in those districts, correct? I have brought it up before, and I still feel it's something that we should continue to look into, is all areas in the city to have these lighting districts. I appreciate them. I see them at work, I see the work that is done. And I would appreciate if the city didn't have areas that are taken out of the general fund that eats up that money, that that is provided by, through the roll calls, the tax calls. But that's just the opinion that I wanted to voice. Thanks.
Thank you. And and I will say, for more information, I don't want to, I can't respond, but what I can say is, is please talk to Mark Fachen about, and he'll explain that process of of why we have some and do not have others that go back. So city attorney didn't jab me, so I'm okay. All right. So with that, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the public hearing? On 6089 Resolution. Not seeing your hearing, anyone, I'll now close the public hearing and bring it back to council level. Council, any comments or or motions? It's only 9:30, wake up. Okay. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I moved to adopt the resolution as submitted.
Okay, do I have a second? Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Motion by Jones, second by Lewis, to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6089 as read by title. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of a conditional use permit in category exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301, existing facilities to allow the use of a type 41 alcohol license for the on sale of beer and wine in conjunction with a bona fide eating establishment located at 650 I Street, APN 025201009. Zafiros Seafood and Grill?
Yes, Zafiros.
So what? Zafiro?
Zafiros.
All right.
But Stacy's going to say Zafiros as well.
Okay. All right. So now let's go to Community Economic Development Director Elms, you have presentation?
Yes, I do, I have a PowerPoint.
Okay. One, two, three. All right.
So I am not as authentic as the Sanchezes, who are the applicants. So please forgive me, but Zafiro Seafood and Grill, this, tonight is conditional use permit 2019-01. The proposal before you is a request for a type 41 alcohol license for the sale of beer and wine in conjunction with an eating place. They're proposing to provide South American cuisine, and this would be a casual restaurant. This was the former location of Shiner's Bar and Grill, which had a type 47. And in terms of intensification of alcohol licenses, a type 41 is just beer and wine, and a type 47 is general alcohol in conjunction with food. So it was a more intense license that the previous applicant operator used. The request before you tonight, as I said, is a less intense than the previous use. But the previous conditional use permit is no longer valid in that Shiner's has not operated for over a year. I want to say, within the staff report, I give the date, and I want to say it's back in 2013, if I'm not mistaken. So with that time lapse, a new conditional use permit is required. And our municipal code requires time lapses, so that as city standards change and uses discontinue, we have the ability to reanalyze projects and assess and provide any additional conditions of approval or what we feel is necessary and reasonable to mitigate any adverse effects. So this is the location of the project. I apologize, this is an aerial view of 650 I Street. It's located in downtown, which is in the mixed-use zoning district. This block of I Street is between 6th Street and 7th Street. This aerial actually shows an older building that's been demolished, but I have a future slide that shows that building gone. The proposed operation of the business, the hours would be Sunday through Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And then they're asking for a special request on Friday and Saturday to operate from 11:00 a.m. until 12:00 a.m. The city, we do have various findings within our municipal code, one of which is that if it's in close proximity to residential uses, the hours of operation would have to cease by 10:00 p.m. But the request before us is to allow the use to operate until 12:00 a.m. to compete with other family restaurants that stay open late and offer occasional live music entertainment or karaoke. The applicant has stated that that live music and karaoke would cease at 10:00 p.m. so that that noise level would be consistent with our noise ordinance. But to be competitive with other restaurants like Chili's or Españas that have live music and karaoke often, they're asking for that extension in time. Staff did feel that it was reasonable, and that it is a mixed-use zoning district. The applicant is reasonably trying to mitigate and and wanting to adhere to our findings and our requirements. And in addition to that, the previous user had no issues. It was owned by a country group, country music group, that played live music there very often. And we had no complaints from the neighborhood at that time. Also, taking into consideration, staff took that it was a type 41 beer and wine and not a 47, and with that, felt it was reasonable to to accept that request and bring that forward to the Planning Commission, who recommended approval of that request to the city council. So according to SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, this project is categorically exempt per Article 19, Section 15301, in that it is an existing facility, and the proposed conditional use permit is not proposing to expand on the floor print. The use permit analysis, there's a very thorough analysis within staff report, and I'm not going to go through each of those items, that there are specific findings for conditional use permits in general, and then there's further findings for conditional use permits as they are associated with alcoholic sales. So it is consistent with our general use permit criteria in that it supports commercial uses in the mixed-use zoning district. It does meet the on-sale criteria, and it will be under the issuing authority of ABC, the Alcoholic Beverage Control of the State of California. This particular project is located in Census Track 22.01. As you can see, the city has four census tracks. 22.01 is in the center of, what is anything west of Mercy Springs Road, which is primarily the downtown area. And there is not an over-concentration on on-sale licenses as deemed by ABC. This is the location of 650 I Street. So this is looking west on I Street at the building. There's still old awnings that are there from the previous operator. The property owner is, does have plans to renovate this property. Currently, right now, the residential units, there's 10 studio apartments upstairs. Eight of them are vacant for to facilitate future rehabilitation of the building. Last I was updated, there's still two tenants there just to keep an eye on the property. But the future plan is to rehabilitate that upstairs and hopefully future plans for outdoor dining and expansion to the west of this project on that empty lot. So very exciting for this area. We're very excited to have a new business occupy this building that's been vacant for a very long time, that second floor. This is the floor plan with camera locations, and I do want to point out that the cameras are highlighted for you in yellow with the yellow circles. There's nine cameras. And also do want to highlight that the conditions of approval, there's a condition that requires surveillance cameras be placed in the interior and exterior of the premises to the satisfaction of the police chief. So what the applicant will do prior to obtaining their business license, they will make an appointment with our police chief. He will review the surveillance cameras where they're located, make any suggestions if any additional cameras need to be located or if they need to be moved. And in order for that applicant to get a business license, they will have to meet the surveillance camera criteria to the satisfaction of our police chief.
So does that also include clarity of the cameras? If the police chief, you know, dictates that that, you know, with new technology coming out, that that, you know, we don't want to overburden out, that, that, you know, we don't want to overburden the, the, the property owner, but we do want cameras that are recognizable?
Absolutely. So it will be to the satisfaction, the police chief, if he is not satisfied with that equipment, will not allow the Community and Economic Development Department to issue a business license. But in addition to that, the condition also requires that that surveillance recording be retained for at least thirty days, and be provided to public safety, to law enforcement upon request.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, piggybacking your question, Chief, do we have a, do you have a standard that you require for businesses as far as clarity for their camera systems going in the business?
Yeah, I do. As technology changes, though, we will adapt to improve the quality of that image. Ten eighty P, four K type cameras are, are what we're seeing to be the norm now, but as that quality improves, we'll ask for that to happen as well.
Which, that's a very good point, and the reason why we don't say the exact type of equipment is technology does change, but we want to make sure that the chief has the right equipment that he is satisfied with. Okay.
Good.
So the Planning Commission reviewed this item and held a public hearing on May eighth and recommended approval to the Los Banas City Council as submitted. So public comment, public hearing notice was published in the Los Banas Enterprise and mailed to the three hundred-foot radius on May twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, and as of today's date, no comments have been received. So with that, staff is requesting that the City Council consider adopting Resolution number six zero nine zero, approving conditional use permit number two thousand nineteen dash zero one, as conditioned and SEQA exemption for the use of a type forty-one alcohol license at six fifty I Street. And that concludes my presentation. The applicants are here as well to answer any questions.
Okay, council, I'll open the public hearing first, and bring it back. At this time, I'd like to open a public hearing on City Council Resolution number six zero nine zero, is read by titles. For anyone who wishes to speak?
Yeah, council? Madam's friend?
And I'm here to talk a little bit about what our business is going to be. My wife, Gladys Sanchez, and I, we are, we are very excited to open this family restaurant, which I'm going to correct a few, a few things here. The, it's going to be a Tex-Mex sort of seafood and grill, and it's going to be something exciting, something that we, we're gonna make it, we're gonna bring not only consumers from local, but also from outside. So we're trying to not only make a family, and also, we're trying to make a, a better town, at least the downtown area, make it more family-oriented, so that my, I've been living here for the past six years, grew up in LA, well, you know, and, well, my, now I consider this town my town. So I'm gonna do the best I can to, to turn it to a better place for me, my wife, and my family, and I'd like to thank the City Council and everyone else. Thank you very much.
You gonna have buttered lobster?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Definitely.
Okay. Just want to be sure.
Our menu, our menus are going to be revealed very soon, and letters will be sent out to all businesses in the, in the surrounding area. Oh, and we actually send letters to five hundred feet in the, from the, from the actual location. And, and yeah, so you spec a flyer, or a letter, or an invitation to a grand opening, of course, if, if everything goes well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
But don't go too far, because I'm gonna, is anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing on this item? Six oh nine oh. Not seeing anyone. I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. Council, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Questions?
No questions? Mrs. Lewis?
Uh, yes, I just-
Wait a minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. A question of Stacy. Across the street, do we still have any residents that are living in those upstairs units?
I believe we do across the street, but as you may recall, there's a little taqueria also across the street. It has a type forty-seven, so it was approved for general. There's also a little market that's approved for off-sale beer and wine, so a type twenty. And the one across the street, when that one came forward for the conditional use permit, stipulation was placed on hours of operation, but that was, staff felt was reasonable because of the intensification of alcohol that they were asking for. And in that instance, the, the resident complaint came down and spoke at the public hearing. So staff and the council decided that what was reasonable was to require that ten PM curfew.
So then, and I'm happy for your business. Based on the information you've just provided, are you saying that's type forty, what, forty-seven?
So this is a type forty-one, which is just beer and wine in conjunction with an eating place, and that was-
But the higher intensity license, because there was one complaint, then you reset the hours to ten o'clock.
Exactly. It's hard liquor is what that was allowed to sell, in conjunction with food as well. And they were not willing to mitigate to stopping, whereas the applicants have said, you know, we're gonna follow noise ordinance requirements, and we want to preserve the neighborhood.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from council?
Nope.
Make sure you let Mr. Freya know when karaoke night is.
Oh, definitely. And I'd like to thank you, Stacy, for your cooperation, and also your presentation was great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right. So bring it back to council level. Do we have a, a motion? Mr. Freya?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to adopt City Resolu-, City Council Resolution number six zero nine zero, as read by title.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Freya, second by Santos, to approve City Council Resolution number six zero nine zero. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. If you get a chance, come and meet with Stacy, because there may be some downtown money to help with the replacement of that awning. So I'm not sure if, if there's anything left, but, but she can advise you when the, the cycles are for, for helping with the replacement. Okay? All right. All right. Any other comment? Oh, okay. Okay, let's go on to item nine. Consideration of adoption of City Council Resolution number six zero nine one, authorizing the city manager to execute professional services agreement for solid waste consultant services with the R three Consulting Group Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred ninety-five, five hundred and sixty-five dollars, with a ten percent contingency of fifteen thousand dollars, and authorize the Public Works Director, City Engineer, to administer the professional services agreement. And we'll go to Director Fajian.
Thank you very much. As was just mentioned, staff recommendation is to adopt Resolution six zero nine one. They'll enter into a professional service agreement with R three Consulting Engineer, Consulting Group, and their task will be to develop a waste ordinance with rates, and to develop a contract agreement for a solid waste contractor, and to authorize the city manager to execute, execute that, that professional services agreement, and authorizes the Public Works Director, City Engineer, to administer. Now, the, the part of this, which is the waste ordinance, is the State of California has mandated organic waste separation from the solid waste stream by January of two thousand and twenty. Currently, that's a mandate on commercial ventures, and depending on how that goes, that could extend into residential sooner than later. The other part of this is the contract agreement for the solid waste contractor. The contract, our current contract to collect the waste is, and transport it, it ended originally on June eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, but the City Council exercised its option to extend until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. So we're, we put out an RFP to get a consultant on board to assist us in developing the organic waste ordinance first, because we have to have it in about January two thousand and twenty, and then to develop right into a new contract agreement. The RFP and the contract agreement is, is a quite complicated process, that it needs a good year and a half to, to get done. So that, that's why we went out to RFP. The RFP was issued on March first, two thousand and nineteen. We only received one proposal. We did send it out individually to four consultants known in the field to do this. It also got advertised on several, I believe, professional services, as well as the paper. Only one consultant responded, it was R three Consulting Group. We did get responses from a couple of the other people that we mailed them to, and it was a workload issue mainly. There was five of us in a, on a review group. We all looked at the, the proposal, we checked the references closely, since there was only one person, and the references were very, very, very good, and they were anywhere from Merced area, I think there was a Hollister area, there was the different ones, pretty local, we checked, and they got some very good recommendations. That's why staff is recommending R three. Part of setting up this RFP, and part of setting up this contract, eventually, when we have, when we have either a different or the same, whoever gets the, the contract to do this work, we'll, we'll be looking at such things as bin sizes for the, for the garbage, if we go to a smaller bin, we'll look at different things. It's not just status quo, we're gonna look at different ways of doing this, because we might, by that time, have to have an organic waste bin of some type in, in the houses at the time, too. So that's a time that we'll look at the concern about having a smaller waste bin out there at that time, and put the rates on that. We'll see how that works out with our consultant, and bring that back to the group way down the line as we work on that. So we hope to see that. The public, this public services agreement is for one hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars, that's a not-to-exceed amount, but we are asking for a ten percent contingency of fifteen, fifteen thousand dollars for unforeseen extra work, which we hope does not happen. And, and I'll be able to answer any questions you might have on this.
Well, I'm, I'm happy, Mark, that you're, you're addressing all the questions that came up tonight with the smaller bins, so thank you for mentioning that. Mrs. Lewis?
Well, I'll just piggyback on that, and I want to thank you, Mark, for bringing that up, because that was gonna be one of my requests for record tonight, is to have the city work with this consulting agency to look at other cities, and I know particularly San Jose has their rates online, and Republic covers San Jose. They have, you know, with their, their green waste, you know, they have a machine that comes by and gathers it up. I don't know if something like that'll work here, because we deal with the high winds in Los Banos. But there, there are other communities that I'm aware of that have the smaller trash, smaller recycle, and the green waste generally is the same size. So even that may change, you know, in the future. But I, I think with issues around recycling in our country, and also with Billy Wright, and, you know, the issues that we have there, certainly, there, there would probably be a different contract negotiated with M C A G if we go to a smaller can, but I, I think that's the wave of the future right now, is, is to get to these smaller units.
And one of the interesting things about the organic waste is, we don't even have an area or designated spot in the valley to bring it to at this moment, so we're sort of trying to fulfill a obligation, where we don't really have a place to put it at the moment.
When you say organic, you're talking about the grass?
Waste, food waste, food waste.
Oh, food waste.
Sorry, food waste is really what we're looking at. That's why it's hitting commercial first, and depending on the ability to conform to what's required, would depend on how fast it moves into residential.
So are you seeing that perhaps in the future, that the State of California is gonna require a separate receptacle of some sort for organic waste?
Yes, I think that'll go all the way down to the entire way, all the way down to residential, yes. And that will be, that would, that will be a bigger, bigger issue, because we already have a lot of issues with, in, in multifamily separating recycles from garbage, so that will be just another issue that will have to be dealt with, education.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Mark, what, one of the things that came up at M C A G that was a little bit upsetting is that, you know, Los Banos, and I think Merced are the only ones that do recycling, and, and I think green, I think recycling. And I, I can't remember exactly, but because that happens, our rates for, for distribution to the, to the waste site may be higher. And, and because other cities are not doing that, they're able to charge a little bit lower rate, because they have maybe two cans instead of the three cans. So if somehow, we could kind of look at that to make sure that we're not getting the short end of the stick, because we're doing the right thing.
Yeah, I, I definitely agree with you. I think that might have more to do with our contract with M C A G.
Yes, it does.
Control, and that's not covered in this scope of work.
Okay.
I'll just let you know that it's-
Right, right. I'm just asking to look at the total picture, when, when, when we come back and, and we have to explain all the rates to our, our rate, our, our citizens. So, so, yeah.
Yeah, we'll keep that in mind, thank you.
And, and thank you for saying you agree. Appreciate that. Hey, so with that, oh, Mr. Freya, I'm sorry.
Well, if you're, if you're ready for, for a motion, though, I'll be glad to make the motion.
Are we ready? Okay, let's go.
Okay. And just with one comment, I always enjoy my trips to Toronto, because I always know a year or two later that California's gonna be adopting whatever they're doing.
Wait, we have someone who wants to speak here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, no public hearing. You want one?
The-
Okay. So, did you want to say something? I, I can allow you to speak during this time if you wish. Okay? Hang on, just one minute. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Marks Guzzari, I'm out of Fresno. We're here representing Republic Waste Services. I just wanted to make a comment. Earlier this evening, you know, there was a lot of comments about state regulations that are coming on, and the Public Works Director covered it pretty well, about, a lot of these are having to do with, it started off with AB thirty-two. I was just making some notes in, in, in my memory bank, putting them down, how, how it affects local governments, how the industry itself is having to deal with some of these things, and how it affects local governments. So we're a partnership with Los Banos. AB thirty-two has to do with the Global Warming Act, and there's a number of issues that are coming down the pike. SB thirteen eighty-three, AB eighteen twenty-six, and AB three forty-one, which is all of the bills that were passed, that are now part of the reason why the city is having to tackle this issue regarding the food organic waste program. And as the Public Works Director pointed out clearly, is that we're gonna be working closely with the city to find a location where we can locate this informa-, this product, so that way the city can meet, can meet, meet the requirement. You know, for the last twenty-five years, we've had a, we've had a good working relationship with the city, and should this pass, we're, we're looking forward to working with the consultant on this issue to tackle it. But one element in it that I'm a little bit, a little bit concerned about is, because of our relationship and our knowledge in this area, and we have such a, a good workforce here in the Los Banos area, Eric Lamon was here to testify, however, he's not feeling well, and we'd rather have him working tomorrow than here testifying, so he went home. But we would love to have the opportunity to sit down and negotiate a long-term contract for not just the, the food waste, but also the overall solid waste program. And I think that by sitting down and having the confidence in, in the staff that we've worked with in the past, as the mayor had commented earlier about the good staff, and then, and then also having to work with the consultant, I think we could bring back a proposal that the council could consider, and if the proposal isn't acceptable to the, to the council, then we could, at that point, then the council can look on, look at alternatives. So I'm formally asking the council for the opportunity to sit down and negotiate with the staff and the consultant to bring back a proposal for a long-term agreement.
Well, that, that's not part of this request tonight, but, but I, I would, I would ask you to please contact our city manager as soon as possible to talk to him.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
If I might, I just want to clarify that if, if the council approves this item this evening, we would be working with the cult consultant to develop an RFP to put out to bid. We, our recommendation is to go through that process and develop that RFP and go out to bid. Because of our purchasing process and that RFP process, I think that would preclude kind of one-on-one sort of conversations with an individual proposal- we would be working with the consultant to develop an RFP to put out to bid. We, our recommendation is to go through that process and develop that RFP and go out to bid. Because of our purchasing process and that RFP process, I think that would preclude kind of one-on-one sort of conversations with an individual proposer. So, I just want to make sure the council is clear that if this is approved, we would work the consultant to develop that formal RFP and go through that process as opposed to sole negotiations with the particular provider.
Yeah. My understanding tonight is we're approving the consultant. And anything else that comes up, I'm just going to refer them to you and then you can, and then I'd like you to deliver what needs to be done.
Okay, sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. So, with that, as item nine has been read, do any more questions? Is there anyone who has questions first? Okay, Mr. Freya, go ahead.
Oh, I was ready to make the motion if you were ready to entertain it.
Yeah, we'll start over. Go ahead.
All right. And then the comments I was making is in Toronto, they have already have the organics in place. They don't use garbage disposals to the snakes. Everything goes into a box, and that goes out in the organics with the garbage truck. So, it's interesting to find out how many things happen there and then a few years later they happen here. Anyway, I would move to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6091 as read by title.
Okay. I'm going to ask for a second, and then I have a comment that needs to be made by someone. Mrs. Lewis?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion by Freya and second by Lewis for the approval of City Council Resolution Number 6091. But I have a question by Mr. Jones. Go ahead.
No, I didn't have a question.
Oh. I'm sorry. Okay. Any other, did you have a question? Who has a question? Anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I think there was a member of the audience that had a question, but I...
We have a motion.
We have a motion on the floor.
We have to go with the motion, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right. So, what I'm doing is there's a motion on the table, and there was a second, so I have to take the vote. That would be proper procedure. Kathy, if you have a question later on, just ask somebody, okay? So, because I don't want to, yeah. All right. So, we have a motion by Freya and second by Lewis for the adoption of City Council Resolution Number 6091. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Consideration of adoption of City Council Resolution Number 6092, approving the conditional acceptance study agreement for hexavalent chromium treatment with Aqua Meteorology? Meteorology?
Meteorology.
Meteorology? Metrology?
AMS.
Huh?
AMS.
Okay. All right. Systems Limited and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Said Agreement. Mr. Fajian?
Thank you again. Yeah, this is just, we want the council to adopt this Resolution 6092, and as we said, it's a conditional acceptance study agreement for hexavalent chromium treatment with Aqua Meteorology Systems Limited, AMS, we'll go with that from now on.
Okay.
And authorize the city manager to execute said agreement. All the background on this we sort of gave earlier, but I'll go over it really quickly. We have 13 wells. It's our only water source. They're between 20 and 40 parts per billion with the chromium 6. The old standard that we were under before it was rescinded was 10 parts per billion. So, all our wells were over that. That will go probably back into effect about that level, I believe, in the next two years. We did get an approved corrective action plan through the State Water Resources Control Board. Phase two of that plan was to evaluate treatment options. And we had done one treatment option evaluation. Actually, this is, we've done two. We did Hoganis, and I'll talk about that in a minute. We did pilot program by them. And AMS actually did two separate smaller pilots, and this is just a larger study. So, background, AMS did a bench testing of city water on well 14. We sent them gallons and gallons of water, and in their labs, they tested it to see if they could treat it, and it worked out very well. So, they came in and did a scaled-down pilot study, which was a very small three-by-three box, a little bit of water went in, and they treated it at well 14. You'll always hear well 14 coming up in these pilot treatments because it is the highest concentration of chromium 6 and the most interesting collection of different minerals in our water that comes out of that well. We have some uranium, all within the standards. We have like the whole spectrum. So, a lot of this treatment has to do with what else is in the water besides chromium 6. And as I said, there's no chromium 6 standard. We meet all the state standards, including uranium. So, AMS now wishes to conduct a five-month test run to assess the system robustness and stability. And what they do, this is a really different way of doing it. This isn't going through filters and taking the chromium out and then disposing of it. This actually is a chemical reaction with tin that changes chromium 6 to chromium 3. So, they changed it to chromium 3, and what they want to do is release the tin that was treated back into the water system. Now, that might be a hang-up with the state. We don't know because they're just at that process now. The good thing about that, it's a cheaper chemical reaction. It's, there's no waste material, and it does, and you don't waste your water. But if the tin has to be removed during this process, then it's a whole filtering system for the tin. So, this is what they're going to be looking at with robustness. Now, during this study, they will not release any of the treated water back into our system. It's going into the, after testing, it'll go back into the sewer, sanitary sewer. So, that is not being put back into our system. Now, a while back, Hoganis, this company that's mainly situated out of Sweden, that the second biggest company to have besides IKEA, actually, and they're located all over the world, they actually came in, they did get us down to two, three parts per billion. It worked. The study did work very well. And then where that was left, they were going to give us a cost estimate to put a full-size treatment facility, and they weren't going to do it unless if it proved, if it proved that it worked, then they wanted us to buy it, like a used car at a reduced rate. And they were going to use that as a full-scale facility for the state approval. They have gotten a conditional acceptance based on our study. Then when chromium 6 was rescinded, their own words were, "We don't think the city's going to want to go into an agreement where they're going to spend money if the chromium 6 standard isn't in place." I do expect to hear from them again once the chromium 6 standard is set. This study will have been done by then, so we can kind of compare back and forth. We have only two or three options of how to treat this water at the current time. So, it's very interesting because it is a chemical reaction that actually takes the chromium 6, doesn't take the water out, just the tin goes, attacks the chromium 6, it turns to chromium 3. At the same time that we do this study, there is no cost to the city for the part that AMS is doing. There's no cost to that. And anytime that we invest in this, as in previous agreements that we had with them and with Hoganis, the same agreement, they will reimburse us. There will be some costs to the city, but that's additional testing that we want to do. This is part of what we want to do to see how this product hits downstream. We want to know that. And that's, we have a budget every year for chromium 6, and they'll come out of that budget. So, that's in there, that's proposed in your budget. The other thing is, I think it's very important to this, and I think it's forward-thinking because I think a lot of times people think we're not moving forward on this, but we are. Even though we don't have a standard, we're going to have a standard. We need to keep looking at alternatives so we get the most cost-effective, cleanest water we can because these costs do go right back into the rates.
Mark, can you explain chromium 3? So, people don't think it's half the toxicity of chromium 6?
No, it's just a different chemical structure of chromium, but there's no carcinogenic factor involved in it. It's just the way it's chemically put together.
Okay.
So, the tin will go in there and move the molecules around or whatever it is, and it will take the structure of chromium 3, not chromium 6.
Which is not bad for you.
Well, it's, no, it's not cancer-producing according to the experts. I'm not an expert on that, but according to the experts. And then if they do that, then we would fall, we still have to meet 10 parts per billion, but they've converted it. Then we go into the 50 parts per billion total chromium standard, which were below.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And still, and the feds are 100 parts per billion total chromium.
Always have, yep.
Always have been.
Always have been.
Okay. All right. Okay. So, any questions? Mrs. Lewis, go ahead.
Thank you. Mark, with this new company that you're speaking to, did they give you any indication that the state may be looking at this conversion of the chromium 6 to 3 using the tin and whether or not the state is going to have some requirement to remove that tin from the water?
It would be the state and the environmental groups that would be most concerned with that. If you read the, I probably didn't have time to, that's fine. There is an AMS study that was done on the little pilot they did for us before. Actually, they've given this at several technical seminars, so it's, we're sort of known for that now, too. And the state's very interested in how it works, but yeah.
I'm just concerned that the environmental groups are going to find another reason to say, "Well, you need to take the tin out, too."
The state's very positive about it, but they are not going to make any commitment on the tin. And I, with, just if you look at what's happened with iron and other hard metals, it'd be a little bit unrealistic to think there wouldn't be some treatment to that tin. And that's when you start comparing the costs because it goes from, it would go from a very reasonable situation to another situation where you have a medium and you're filtering something, and you do have to get rid of it, just like you do with the iron for the Hoganis study. So, there is, and I think the state's big concern now is how does it work on a full scale? It's interesting, when they did this on the small scale, if you read that, it actually reduced it to like two and three, and then they checked it 24 hours later, and it was zero, which didn't make a lot of sense. And what happens is it also will react to the chlorine that's in the pipes as it sits, and that over a period of time will revert it back to chromium 6. So, you have to look at lifespan inside the piping system. So, there's a lot of stuff, and that's why we'll be testing downstream because we want to see what this does when it sits in our tank. Because it's 5 million gallons of water, you don't get rid of that every day. So, we have to look at all these type of things. But it is interesting, but it'd be very surprising if there's not some type of filtering for the tin that's required.
And I read the report. Did they give you, have they done this for any other communities within California?
I don't know that, I'm sorry. I don't know that, yeah. I know they've done some lab tests with other communities.
So, we're kind of like the first ones that they're going to...
Kind of the forefront, yeah, yeah. We had, well, 14 is very interesting to a lot of people around the state and around the country, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, a lot more reasonable than those prices I quoted with the originally what was told to us?
If you start, if you start treating the tin and you're approaching those prices.
Oh.
One minor note, which I think is kind of neat, the grad student that worked on this technology that's not working for him anymore, but actually did the work to get this technology to this position was a Davis graduate and was going to grad school at Davis, and I don't know his name, but he is a native of Los Banos. So, his work could go back into the testing of this here. That's what the company tells me.
Can we get a deal?
And he will get credit, and he will get credit down the line, they said, so.
Sony would be interested in a deal, you know, since he's a local guy.
Well, I don't, I think he was just doing his grad work there, so I don't know if there's too many deals involved.
All right, okay. All right. Let's see. Miss, Mrs. Lewis, are you?
I'm done.
Okay, you're good? Okay, Mrs. Santos?
Oh, it's been on for a minute.
Oh, okay. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Fajian, if we were to go to that, or if that was a viable option, that tin, do you think that would be able to be filtered out through our household residential filters that we would install, or do you think it would be a challenge for any residential user to be able to filter it on their end?
If it wasn't required and tin was coming through, yeah, a lot of those filters will take that out. But if it's a requirement to release it as a water supplier, we have to do it at the source. We have to do it at the well.
Okay.
We can't say we're putting this in the system and the state said it's not good for you, but you remove it. We can't do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, everybody good? All right, do I have a motion? Mrs. Lewis, I think you punched in first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6092 as read by title.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Santos for the adoption of City Council Resolution Number 6092. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Consideration of appointment of a council member and an alternate to the Valleywide Special City Selection Committee associated with the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. One question, who's the alternate now?
I'm the council member who was the alternate. So, there was, and so he's no longer here.
Okay. So, I would ask the council, the person who is the, I'm not going to call you a senior citizen, just a senior, and the person who's had knowledge of that committee, it would be my recommendation to make Mrs. Lewis the council member appointee, and I need an alternate if that's acceptable to council. And Mrs. Lewis? Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to be the alternate? Thank you, because I was just looking at you to make you the alternate. Okay. Okay. Mr. Jones has volunteered. Any objections to him volunteering?
No, no objections.
All right. So, before he does object, would someone on this side make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mrs. Santos?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Councilmember Lewis as the main or primary vote, or, sorry, primary committee member for the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Board Control District, and Councilmember Jones as a second.
Okay, and I bet you Mr. Freya's going to second that.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, it's been motioned by Johnson-Santos and second by Freya to appoint Mrs. Lewis as the primary member to the Valleywide Special City Selection Committee associated with the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, and Mr. Brent Jones as the alternate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Item 12, cancellation of regular city council meeting scheduled for Wednesday, July 3rd, due to the 4th of July holiday. Mr. Freya, your name's up. Do you want to?
Oh, sure. I'll move to cancel the regular city council meeting, July 3rd, due to the 4th of July holiday.
Okay. Do I have a second? Someone wants a meeting on July 3rd? Okay. Mr. Jones?
I definitely don't want to meet in that one, so I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved by Freya, second by Jones for the cancellation of the July 3rd meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Now, we'll go to item 13, advisement of public notices, and we're going to go to Mrs. Elm's three reports.
Yes. So, the first item is for a site plan review for Cristoforo Hernandez. This is for the development of a commercial location at 1419 Place Road. The second item is for conditional use permit number 2019-02. This is a request for a Type 40 alcohol license for La Esperanza, and this is in their taqueria within their food court, within their food center, and they're located at 937 West Pacheco Boulevard. And just for clarification, a Type 40 is beer only. And then the last item is for a mobile food vending unit for El Goryn Se Hall, number 6, and this would be located at 1301 West Pacheco Boulevard. These public hearing items will be presented to the Planning Commission on Wednesday, June 12th, 2019, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. That concludes my report.
Okay. Any questions on item 13? Okay, let's go to item 14, a city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple items tonight. Staff's working on a grant to pursue funding for the refurbishment of Pacheco Park. Grant is funded through California State Parks and Recreation Department and has a maximum funding request of up to 8.5 million. It's an exciting grant opportunity. This grant requires no matches. It'll fund significant renovations to the park if it's received, including elements like turf, trees, facilities, and other new amenities. We're holding some public meetings to gather input from the community on this grant application. Those meetings will be held on June 19 and June 21, from 6 to 8, at the community center. We're hoping we get the grant, and we definitely need some community input in that grant process. A couple other items, we've got some movies in the park coming up, Friday, June 21, and Friday, June 28. On the 21st, we'll be showing How to Train Your Dragon. On the 28th, Mary Poppins. Those two movies start around 8:45 or dusk, but get there early to get your best spot. These movies are sponsored by the city, Sutter Health, and Merced County, so two great movies coming up, hope to see a good turnout.
Old Mary Poppins or New Mary Poppins?
I think it's New Mary Poppins.
New Mary Poppins.
New Mary Poppins, yes.
Okay.
Although I'd like to see Dick Van Dyke.
Yeah. He's in there, too.
He has a cameo?
Yes, yes, an older cameo. Okay. All right. All right, with that comment, all right. Okay, let's go on to item 15. Anything else? Alex? Okay, thank you. Report an update on the Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, and Measure V Committee. Well, I just want to tell you, staff and council, I appreciate all the help, because sometimes I kind of feel out there, by myself, but at this case, it was not that way, and the letter that we sent to MCAG and the Measure V Committee in reference to our projects solidified those projects. So I want to thank the four of you and staff for what you did, because they saw a cohesive effort for those projects. There wasn't one council member that diverted from anything that we're trying to do. And what that committee wanted to see is that we were all in on the projects that we were suggesting. So the news I have to report is, is that we have the money to now build the college walkway, and that's going to happen within the next, what, couple of years, you think, Mark? Okay. Two to three. Okay? And we have the money up to right-of-way purchase, which has never happened before, for the Pioneer Trail. So, and that's over like a five or six-year plan. So what we need to do is, who's ever here has to be very diligent and make sure, I hope it's this group, but have to be very diligent to make sure that we stay on track to get that money. It's a large amount of money, it's basically the money that we put into Measure V, and we're getting that back. And it's going to fund up to right-of-way, and including right-of-way purchase. So then what will happen, staff and MCAG will then work their magic to get the Caltrans to pay the $45 million that's going to be for construction. And that's going to be a task, but we'd have a lot better chance of getting that money because it's shovel-ready, and we've never had anything close to shovel-ready. So it's very important that we stick with this, we continue, the money's there, and it's ours to lose if we don't continue with this process. And for those of you who are watching this meeting tonight, it's a pathway to getting some of the traffic off 152 and still not destroying the commerce through Los Banos. And I think that was very important to all of us, that we not destroy what we have as far as a tax base. And we have a viable plan where, instead of a half a billion dollars for the bypass, a $45 million project to divert traffic and still be within our city limits. So it's important, and thank you to staff, thank you to council for your backing, and because that's what the group looked at, that everyone was together on this project. So thank you. And then, Mark, as I mentioned previously, that we look at with, in, when we discuss our new rates, that, you know, there are not many people recycling in the county, and that we just don't want to get penalized for doing a good thing. So. All right. So with that, I'd like to go to, oh, any questions, anyone? Okay. Let's go on to item 16, city council member reports, and tonight we'll start with Mrs. Lewis.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I just want to piggyback on what you indicated about the MCAG and the shovel-ready money for our project. We also had people from our community that came to that hearing and...
Oh, thank you.
...made a public outcry about the necessity of that money to widen Pacheco and to have the money for shovel-ready. I was really happy to hear that MCAG agreed to do that. It's really important for our city, and it'll make a big difference for our traffic. Just a couple of things. Last Thursday, I attended Creekside Junior High School Spring and Awards Concert directed by Mr. Faria, and I just want you to know that you have some very talented students there at that junior high school, and I'm sure they're going to filter into your high school and help you out there with the choir as well. And also, last Wednesday, I did attend, as the alternate, the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control Board meeting, and it was, there were three divisions in Modesto, where I was located, and Fresno, and another committee of people in Bakersfield, and it was all done by television and telecast, purposely for one reason, and that was to elect someone to the executive board from a small community. So, Mr. Jones, there won't be a lot of work involved in that. And they did feed us, so it was good. It was from Olive Garden, it wasn't a sandwich or anything like that. So the ride and the opportunity to go and attend that meeting ended up being good. So I don't think they will have meetings regularly on a monthly basis. Usually it's, the, all the cities are called together for a specific purpose, if there's something that they have to make a decision on to pass on to the executive board. And I, other, the last thing is, I just wanted to thank Rhonda Lowell for coming tonight and sharing with the council and with our community the small jobs, the new businesses that people are opening here in Los Banos and coming to our community, because they see it's a place where they can have a thriving business, and especially for her organization that's working, I think, with UC Merced to help small business owners be more successful in keeping their business open, which is something that we didn't have here before when we were giving away redevelopment money. So hats off to Rhonda, and thank you for sharing what you did with our city, with our community today. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Life is good, graduation season. Congratulations for all the school success. Los Banos is still a great place to bring up your family. Schools are great, people are great, town's great, and we continue growing. Exciting to see the new restaurant coming in, and it's a wonderful place to be. And graduations are this week, and so we thank, I think this police is going to be doing the all-night party again, too. You guys sponsor that, and do the sober graduation, so it's a wonderful, all these things going on to, for our community, benefiting our community, working on grants for the park. We get these grants for the parks, it's exciting. It's a very nice place to be, and looking forward to a wonderful summer and wonderful fall. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's go on to Mrs. Santos.
Thank you very much. I'm going to say thank you to staff. It was a long one today, we had a lot of questions for you guys, so thank you guys very much for that. And, yeah, not much more than that. But Lucy, congratulations, I did see your son up there, so, yeah. So congratulations on that. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to Mr. Jones.
No report.
Kenny, you? Okay, Sober Grad, that's on Friday night at Aqua Entertainment. And so council members, anyone who can go there for a little while, it usually gets going about 11:00 PM. I mean, that's kind of when it starts. And so if you can spend some time, the young people, the graduates, are really interesting, and I'm sure they'd love to see you if you could spare a few minutes to come by and visit with them. You have to check in, and then they make you a, kind of a chaperone for as long as you want to be there, and as long as you want to stay. So they have, they have food, you know, so it's, I think you'll like it. So if you can, please come by. The high school athletes and pentathlon, high school and elementary pentathlon, thank you for coming this evening. You're always welcome here at the council, and it's good to see Mr. Marshall. We have a great working relationship with the school district and the city of Los Banos, and I, we really want to continue that. So it's, they talk to us, we talk to them, and that's the, that's the beauty of it, and if anything comes up, we're in constant communication, and the city manager and the superintendent of schools have a good working relationship, so it benefits everyone. The movie nights, if you haven't been to one before, please come. It's a great time, it's just kind of a time where people just kind, is that going to be at the Plaza?
Yes.
Okay. And at Henry Miller Plaza, when it gets dark, it usually starts, it's what, about 9 o'clock, somewhere around there? Yeah, yeah, okay. And, okay, so bring your lawn chairs, bring a blanket, and everyone just has a, you know, a great time, and so we're going to have two of them this year, and that's really nice that they've been sponsored. The Women's Night Out is going to be, is it tomorrow night? Okay, tomorrow night. So if you can come down, it's not just for females anymore. So come down, and there'll be different things to do, so come down with your significant other, your wife, significant other, whoever, and have a good time downtown. And one last thing, tomorrow is the 75th anniversary of D-Day, and that is commem, the commemoration of the largest invasion ever into war-torn Europe. It comprised of 5,000 ships, 11,000 airplanes, and 150,000 soldiers from the United States, Great Britain, and Canada that stormed the Nazi-occupied French beaches at Normandy. If it wasn't for that attack, the war might have gone on a lot longer, and it changed the tide in the war, and we were able to be victorious. So for the veterans of World War II, and for that fact, all veterans, but veterans of World War II, this is a special day for them, and to free everyone from Nazi tyranny. And for those 15 men who paid the ultimate sacrifice from Los Banos, who lost their lives and their names are inscribed outside of City Hall, we, I'm at a loss for words, so I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you. So with that, we have a closed session, actually two items, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency designated representatives, city manager Tarazas, city attorney Vaughn, city clerk, human resources director Maloney, finance director Williams, legal counsel Tufo, employee organizations, Los Banos Public Employees Union, Public Works, Local 1/AFSCME, Unrepresented Miscellaneous Employees, and B, Conference with Real Property Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Property located at 1624 San Luis Street, Los Banos, California, APN 428070001. A portion approximately 12,785 square feet. City negotiator, city manager Tarazas, city attorney Vaughn, finance director Williams. Negotiating parties, Merced County Community Action Agency, CEO Callahan-Johnson, under negotiation, purchase price and terms of sale. If there's anything to report, we will do so when we come back. Other than that, have a nice evening.